Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our BOC meeting. I'm calling to order the regular session meeting of the Board of Commissions of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, December 8th, 2020 at 6:30 PM. Ms. Jacobs, roll call, please.
Mayor Alahuzis.
Here.
Vice Mayor Carr.
Here.
Commissioner Terapany.
Here.
Commissioner Donovan.
Here.
Commissioner Vaticiotos.
Here.
Tonight's evocation will begin by our city attorney, following by, with the pledge of allegiance.
Our Heavenly Father, we ask for your special blessing this Christmas season on all those assembled here tonight. We especially pray for the well-being and health of people throughout the world who are suffering from conflict, illness, hunger, and other human tragedy. May all men and women who are less fortunate than we are be ever in our hearts during this season of joy and love. This we pray. Amen.
We are now going to the public comments of the items that will now go and be discussed this evening. If anyone has any comments, please come forward, state your name and your address. For the record, you'll be getting, you'll be given four minutes. Also like to remind to everyone that all public comments must be directed only to the Chair of the me, of the meeting in a professional manner with respect without personal attacks. So if anybody has any comments, please come to the podium.
Peter Lakkas, 514 Ashland Avenue. It's nice to see everybody again, and it's nice to see a new dais up there. And the way the city is being laid up is very nice. So I appreciate all those efforts, and I also have to thank our Public Works Department. They did a really nice job on Court Street. Now for the other stuff. First time walking back in, no backup. No backup. I asked, I arranged this because of the COVID. Well, put the hand sanitizer by the backup and ask people to sanitize their hands before they touch it. Because you're denying those in attendance access to that information. Something else that you do have control over that I wish to bring up again is our situation with the road going in Mears Mango. It's kind of ridiculous that if y'all want to honor Mango, that you didn't make it Mango all the way to Alternate 19, and you created an East Mears. Ridiculous. Should have been all Mango from Alternate 19 all the way to US 19. So I don't know if you have the ability to change that or correct it, but I think if you're trying to honor the African-American community for their historic aspect, it should have gone all the way to Alternate 19. Secondly, with regards to Mears Mango Road, we need to start working on getting distant connected. Too often I come up belcher and distant, and there's traffic that comes up, then cuts down Curlew, and they end up going to Alternate 19, and then they go up, and then they have to come back east again to go into certain areas of town. We need to work on our traffic patterns. With regards to traffic patterns on MLK and Alternate 19, that light is ancient. We need to get in a new sensor or something. I was trying to come eastbound on MLK today. Traffic was backed up all the way to Banana, took three lights to get through. Going eastbound, there's no left turn signal, and the signal that is going eastbound is very short. So those are things that need to be looked at. Lastly, with regards to traffic, you need to start working with the county and find a way to open up the intersection at Lime and Safford. That will be another open access to go east and west, and there's no reason that that road shouldn't be opened up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Panayotikoulias, 595 Peninsula Avenue. Good evening, Tarpon Springs and Tarponites worldwide. I can't tell you how excited I get up here on the podium speaking in front of my fellow Tarponites. I want to first say welcome back, The Irene Jacobs. You light up the room, and we Tarponites appreciate everything you do at the Clerk's Office. Now, my main goal is a better Tarpon Springs, and real Tarpon Springs understands what I mean. First, I provided Mark LaCorus' annual reviews. He performed on department heads. I want them to be placed into the record as evidence. The complacency of Mark LaCorus is in those reviews. Tarpon Springs, I've never come up here and told a lie. Everything I say is the truth, and they can't handle it. Tonight's theme is hypocrisy, family favoritism, nepotism, the good old boy network, negligent retention, and selective enforcement. We fought Walmart to death to not build on the land, only to let a prominent family turn a profit off us. It's all tying together, believe me. We saw at the November meeting the mayor protecting the city manager at all costs, even violating Robert's Rules of Procedure. We also saw the cutest thing ever. The PBA attorney waited the whole meeting to do an interview for Chief Koshin to publicly state to the commission he was qualified for the city manager position. Unreal. And to think Mark LaCorus told Tracy McManus of the Tampa Bay Times, he's never talked about the city manager position to Chief Koshin. We've been duped. The silence is deafening. Now, let's pivot to David Banther, a candidate for mayor. I ask that you please publicly disassociate yourself with Jim Colianos because you don't need to be associating with Mark LaCorus' and Mayor Alahuzis' political bully.
I thought I said in the beginning, excuse me, sir, sir, I thought I said at the beginning would be no personal attacks.
It's not a personal attack.
It would be no personal attacks. Mr. Colianos is not an official, and you better take that back. Don't do that again, because I will ask you to sit down.
David Banther's been dodging the question we Tarponites want answered. The citizens of Tarpon Springs don't want police officers managing our city or being assistant city managers. It doesn't make sense. His real estate partner, Commissioner Terapany, stated in the Tampa Bay Times article, "I feel a homegrown city manager meets best." Of course, he said "I." That's all he cares about, himself, the Terapany's, and the good old boy network. Chief Koshin isn't considered homegrown. He won't even move into our city since the charter ordered it a decade ago. And I got news for you, Townsend. We Tarponites don't consider you homegrown either. You didn't go to elementary, middle school, or high school with us. Neither did David Banther. You didn't walk the same halls and grow up with us. It's a Tarpon thing, and you wouldn't understand. So when I hear "homegrown" coming from you, I laugh. You've been protected by the Golden Crescent that is the spring bayou. David Banther, the citizens of Tarpon Springs want to know whether you want a city manager from a national search or another homegrown police officer. You need to pick one or the other. I believe you're afraid to lose half your support if you say you want a homegrown department head, chief city manager, and I know you don't want to offend the good old boy network by saying you want a city manager from a national database search. So please come up to the next BOC meeting and state your position. We citizens want a better Tarpon Springs, and I honestly believe we are getting there one day at a time. Thank you, and God bless you all.
Do we have any other public comments? Thank you very much. Ms. Jacobs, have we received any emails?
We received no email.
Sorry, I didn't hear you. You said none.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Jebb, have we have, do we have anybody online that wishes to speak?
If anyone participating in Zoom would like to speak, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. Time, sir. Have any raised hands at this time, sir?
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is a presentation. It's an update on the live webcams and SpongeDuck sound system. Mr. LaCorus staff report.
Yes, Suzanne Linton will give this report.
Good evening. My name is Suzanne Linton. I'm your Information Technology Director. We went out to bid for this system, and unfortunately, we did not receive any bids back. So I did some investigative work and looked at many different cities and many different packages that they have at these cities. And I found that in order to get bids, we needed to have a spectrum analyzer test. And what this is, is to make sure that we don't have any interference that would cause drops or lags in the music. So we have some equipment coming to conduct the spectrum analyzer test. And also, I reached out to a company. It's called Street Sounds, and they're with Aeronetics out of Georgia. And last year, they implemented ambient sounds in Watertown, South Dakota, Somerset, Kentucky, Concordia, Kansas, and Van Wart, Ohio. And I reached out to those cities, and all of them are very happy with their system. So I asked them what we could do to make sure that this was a successful project. And they are going to be sending us some radios so that we can actually look at an actual modulated signal to make sure that we get the product that we want. The system that, that I, that I looked at is, is a pretty easy system to implement. And after we get the system analyzer test done, I will bring back more updates to, and then do a design package so that I can show you what we can do and what we can't do. Do you guys have any questions?
Well, thank you. I just want to tell you that we got positive input from the SpongeDuck business community and the residents on the camera that you installed down at the docks. I love it. But we need, we need at least two more cameras now. One at the Marina area, and the other one on the Hope Street looking down towards Roosevelt.
Well, I actually already ordered one more.
Okay.
And that one is going to go where you said, looking down Roosevelt. So we should probably get that, well, it depends. Building maintenance, when they get back up and running, they can go and install that. So we also installed one at the tree lighting, and that was really, really nice.
That was nice.
Everyone loved that.
I just want to thank and to congratulate our, our staff for doing this project in-house. It's very nice of them doing that. Thank you. And we're going to wait for, for the speakers when the time comes. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Carr, any comments?
I've got no comments, but thank you for your presentation.
Commissioner Terapany. No comments. Commissioner Donovan.
Yeah, I just want to thank you and the IT Department. That's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Vaticiotos, any comments?
Ms. Linton, the, the spectrum analyzer, this is Street Sound in Georgia. Are they going to help us, or are they just consulting long distance with us for right now?
They're just consulting long distance. We can conduct this ourselves. So we have some equipment that we already use for a wireless scenario. So we are, they are sending us some equipment to do it for a radio scenario. So we're going to be doing both to make sure that we don't have any interference on both sides.
Okay, that, that's good. The, and then the webcams, the second one, you mentioned Roosevelt. Is that going to be pointing west towards Roosevelt, or?
There's one that's pointing, I don't know which way is west, and, but one that's pointing down the docks. One's going to point up the docks. And then another one, right where the one is right now at the SpongeDiver, is going to turn around and look that way.
We'll have three of them total.
Yes.
That sounds good. The one down on Roosevelt is actually going to be looking up towards this way, towards Alternate 19.
Correct, yes.
That sounds good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to go to public comments. Do we have any public comments on this item?
Okay, can you hear me, or is it okay?
Sure, we can hear you fine. Would you please turn the podium facing us? I mean, the, that'll be easier for you to.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. I am concerned about the proposed ambient sound that is down, is supposed to be down at the SpongeDucks. And I've seen very little information about this. Is it okay to take off my mask? It's kind of fogging up my glasses.
Uh huh.
Okay, thank you. All that I've heard is the livestream will feature upbeat background music. Now, this is vague. I assume that upbeat means, means it will be some sort of light bland American rock or seasonal hits. The music base will be located at the city marina. Camera locations capture elements representing the charm of the docks. But there's no details about what the music will be, who will select it, and whether there will be periodic changes. Has the BOC considered any of these issues? If so, I'd like you to tell me about it. But first, I want to make a couple of comments. The reason I'm concerned about this is because of the tourism at the SpongeDucks. And as a short history lesson, we've had tourism down at the docks since the early 20s, and that was the time when mass tourism first started in the US. And it was also culturally based tourism. They were there to see Greek culture and the sponge, and the sponge industry. That's why they came. Even in the tourist guides, like the WPA guide in the 30s and the 40s, Tarpon Springs was always featured as having Greek culture. That is why people came. That's why people come today. So even when the sponge industry went down in the, after the late 40s, still movies like Beneath the Twelve Mile Reefs brought that culture to people. They came to Tarpon Springs to see Greek, you know, Greek culture and the sponge industry. There are many other wonderful aspects of town, but this is what the SpongeDucks is about. So now about the music. Why not use this sound system as an opportunity to enhance the touristic experience? And I don't mean Greek muzak. I don't mean, you know, endless, you know, repeats and replays of Never on Sunday, or Zorba, or anything like that. This is also an educational opportunity for people to hear some of the music that was played historically by the Greek community, and that is played today. Not just schlock, not muzak, but what is actually played. It might also be an opportunity for them to hear some of the people that lived in this town, like George Katzeros or Amalia Vaca. Most people, and I doubt if many of you know about some of these people, yes, Katzeros, but it's an educational opportunity for all of us. I somehow don't think you're going to get this from the companies giving the, setting up the music. So what I think probably needs to be done is to have a committee formed of people in town, not just, you know, Joe's Greatest Hits, you know, but people who are professional musicians or scholars of music or cognizant of the Greek history of the town and what was being played, and would be able to set up some kind of playlist so that this could be programmed into the music at the docks. I just don't see us just having ambient sounds and reggae. I mean, they're great, but that's not what people are coming to Tarpon Springs for. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Do we have any other comments? Ms. Jacobs, have we received any emails?
No emails have been received on this item.
Mr. Jebb, do we have any attendees wishing to speak on this item?
If anyone would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Thank you. Mr. LaCorus, do you have, do you want to comment on that in regards to the music?
Again, our first concern is getting the system, getting up and knowing its capabilities. After that, then the board will decide those type of things of what's done. That comes later. Our, our first priority and what we're working on now is getting a system up and getting a system that we have the most capabilities to do what you as a board decide we're going to do with and stuff. So that would be step two.
Thank you. The second item on the agenda is the Spring Boulevard Shoreline Design and Permitting Staff Report.
Bob Robertson.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Bob Robertson, Project Administration Department Director. And I'm presenting this item for the board's consideration regarding the South Spring Boulevard Revetment Project, otherwise known as the Riprap Project or the Boulder Zone. Much of the concern about this project over time has focused on really two priority areas addressing pedestrian safety and the aesthetics of the bullers that are laying there, the armor stone. Regarding pedestrian safety, the board authorized construction of a sidewalk on the east side of the road, construction of which is now nearly complete. And the idea of building a pedestrian path along the west side has been discussed, and would come with a couple of challenges. We've confirmed with Pinellas County that they have no plans or budget for building a connector trail where the right, the South Spring right-of-way transitions from a city right-of-way to a county right-of-way right there at Carolina Avenue. So a trail along the west side would have nothing to connect to, at least for the foreseeable future. Also, providing augmented or enhanced pedestrian crossing on or near the existing bridge just south of MLK would be an expensive hurdle or certainly a challenge as well. But tonight's discussion primarily addresses the aesthetics of the armor stone that lines much of the west side of South Spring Boulevard and a segment of the southern shore of the bayou near Virginia Avenue. So I'll start with some numbers. The armor stone is laid out in three linear segments along that right-of-way totaling about 1,700 total feet and covering an area of about 25,000 square feet, which is equivalent to 70 yards of a football field sideline to sideline. One of the early ideas to address the aesthetics was to cover it with dirt and sod, which is an idea that we've improved upon by suggesting an engineered matrix. And this matrix, matrix would consist of layers, starting with a combination of medium and probably small-sized bedding stone to fill the voids between the larger jagged armor stone, essentially to level it off. The idea here would be to level it off enough and to provide support for another layer, which would be a permeable geofabric, like a liner. That would be sufficient to support a layer of soil on top of that. But the liner would also be permeable enough to allow for drainage to flow through the liner, and there are systems available for that. On top of that would be, on top of the soil would be a sod layer or some other salt-tolerant ground cover species. The system would have to be designed in such a way as to prevent erosion along the shoreline side as well. So to accomplish this, we would need US Army Corps approval. Again, this is, as you know, an Army Corps project. The Boulder Zone is, that is. So that requires engineered plans and specifications. Moving ahead with creating the plans and specs is what we're asking you to consider tonight. I've negotiated a scope and fee with Cardno, one of our engineer of record contracts, to complete that work for just over $50,000. And like I said, that would cover the design and permitting effort. If you choose to move forward with this tonight, we would then come back to you to present the final permit and design for you to approve before we would move forward with any construction. And speaking of construction, as of now, a very budget-level construction cost estimate is about $450,000 to fully contract this work. But through the design process, if you prove it tonight, we would definitely be looking at innovative ways to trim that cost down, possibly through using some existing stored materials, maybe salvaged from the dredge project, in-house staff and equipment, or other possible innovations that we can explore during that process. So with that, I'll stop for questions and discussion. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson. First of all, I want to thank you for taking the time and discussing this project with me in your office.
Yes, sir.
As you stated, those, those big rocks on the South Spring Boulevard were placed to stop the erosion along the shoreline. Those rocks made the beautiful area unusable, as far as I can see, for the people to enjoy the beauty of the bayou. And, and appreciate that you And, and appreciate that you came up with a proposal to cover those rocks with soil and sod. Approximately, it's going to cost us fifty thousand dollars. Perhaps this will be a compromise, but since we are now almost finished with the sidewalks on the east side of the road, it's not a safety concern any longer. I like the recommendation that I got from the residents there. And there they say that do it right or don't do it at all. What they're recommending is to extend the area out to the bayou as it was before the erosion on the shoreline, so the residents can enjoy the view of the bayou. I, as you can see, the pictures that are provided to the B O C, to my fellow commissioners, it shows that back in nineteen forty-one, how wide the area was, and looks like we lost about ten feet. Mr. Robinson, my question is, do you think this option can be accepted by the Army Corps of Engineers? And what's going to take to do it?
I would hate at this point to speculate on what the Army Corps would accept or not, Mr. Mayor, but if, if this is an option that the board would like us to explore, I could talk to our engineer to develop a scope and fee to, to, to possibly to, to look at designing that. But again, you know, the Army Corps is kind of tough with, with this project on what they're going to approve or give us feedback on early on in early stages.
Uh huh. Because the way I see it, even though that, yes, it's going to cover the rocks with your proposal, but that's going to add at least another six or eight inches on the top of what it is now. Am I right?
At least, at least.
At least that much, probably more than that.
And I would say, Mr. Mayor, that your idea doesn't have to be exclusive of this one. I, I would imagine that if we did move forward with something like what you're proposing, we would still want to do some kind of covering over the revetment area anyway. So it could be something augmented later as well, just something for, for you to consider.
Okay. I, I like to hear from my fellow commissioners what they think about that. And Vice Mayor Carr.
Thanks, Mayor. Bob, thank you for your update. I think we obviously had a handful of conversations about this. I do believe still that this, there is still a safety issue with the rocks. Although the sidewalk on the other side's safety has improved, there's still a safety issue though of people walking on the rocks. If you're a bicyclist and it's a narrow road and someone comes by you tight and pushes you into the rocks, you're falling into the rocks. So to me, I still feel there's a safety issue. I would prefer, and I think the mayor had a great idea, and I know that there's been multiple members on the board that have discussed this as well in the past, that some type of extension of what goes around Spring Bayou, some type of a, I don't want to say the exact same thing, but it could be a blend between that and a boardwalk of some sort, not using wood, but using concrete to extend that around the bayou. Today I saw an interesting post by Pinellas County on their Facebook page, and it talked about the Pinellas Trail. So we have the Pinellas Trail that runs from Saint Pete to Tarpon Springs, and it connects to other trails. It's going to connect to the Pasco County Trails, connected to the Hillsborough County Trail now. And so this is in nineteen ninety, December of nineteen ninety, the first five miles of the Fred Marcus Pinellas Trail opened along an abandoned railroad corridor to provide unique and protected green space for walking, riding, bikes, and running. So although the county isn't planning on doing anything from Virginia or Carolina out towards Sunset Hills yet, I do think this is the area that the city could do is connect Spring Bayou to the Woodcombe Bayou over M L K and at least to Carolina, and have a starting point for this, for the county, then to come back in and partner with the city to do something further out to Sunset Beach. So I would support, I would go the same way the mayor was talking about, with some type of either wall or backfill, where you could actually have a pathway. There's an extensive amount of people that exercise that walk these areas. It's a beautiful spot. It's a beautiful spot to come visit and to pull people off Craig Park and continue it down further. I think is an important aspect, and it's really a legacy project for our, our city for many, many years. Another thing you could address too is the rising tides and the flooding in the roads potentially. And some of those areas, I think that would be interesting to see how that could be tied in as well. So that's my thoughts on it. I, I do appreciate the idea of the dirt and the grass to cover up from the aesthetics and help with the safety. I think it's a great idea, but for four hundred thousand dollars, I think we could put that money to better use. And I hope the commission, we could have at least a decent conversation on what everyone's desires would be to hopefully see this pulled from Craig Park around the bayou for better recreation and better, better safety. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, just want to clarify, the idea is not, didn't come from me. It came from the people, from their neighbors.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Just so you know.
Yeah, and the residents have reached out to me about it too, saying this is what, I mean, there is, I think, one resident that didn't like the idea, but for the most part, everyone loves the idea of doing that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Mayor. Mr. Robertson, thanks for your presentation. We've, Vice Mayor said we've discussed this at least a handful of times, which is absolutely true. And I know that everybody in town wants to try and make this right wrong. It's just a matter of, one, trying to find the path of least resistance, and two, trying to stretch our money as far as it goes to try and think forward to the future and, and regain kind of the vista that we had there, but also taking into consideration that we can't rework the, what do you call it, revanment?
Revetment.
Revetment, too much based on what was done there. And as ugly as it is, in my opinion, you know, it definitely does serve a, serve a purpose as it relates to the bank erosion. So I personally think that, you know, in a perfect world, it would be awesome to have the, the waterfront vista kind of go from the boat ramp all the way around and connect to, to the parks and Gulf Road. But, you know, from a feasibility standpoint, I don't know, you know, once we get around Carolina, what the likelihood is of being able to do that, given how close the sea or the, the water is already to the road there. I think that we're probably going to need to have some kind of a shoreline stabilization project from about Carolina onto Gulf Road. So for me, I did, I did have a couple of questions. If we were to go with this, would it be, would it be walkable after it's done?
I would say that it's safe enough to walk on. Not that I would necessarily encourage that, but that's the idea of making it a stable surface.
Okay. So in terms of maintenance, then we'd be able to maintain it, you think?
Certainly.
So there's no, no threat of grass growing six feet tall?
Well, we would certainly want to put, specify a species that we could mow.
I mean, it sounds silly.
No, I understand where you're coming from. You don't want it to become unsightly.
Walkable and it's stable enough, we would be able to maintain it. So there's not a, a huge issue that you could foresee as it relates to visibility. And then going back, I know that this project in its infancy was done for shoreline stabilization. But was there ever any component in terms of flooding relief with this, this project in particular?
I don't recall that being any part of the original project.
And I don't recall us ever really. Yeah, I mean, I know there's been ideas, you know, in terms of that intersection in that area to try and prevent some flooding or look into it more with a vault or different ideas that we've had. But this particular project in itself, I don't remember there being any real flooding relief aspect.
No.
Yeah. So I mean, I, you know, to spend four hundred thousand dollars, as crazy as it sounds, is the path of least resistance from what we've explored, I think, on this board. So, you know, tonight I could, I'm comfortable enough giving direction on trying to, to do that, but if the board wants to step back and continue to take a closer look at it and figure out, you know, if there's an option that can make this project better or create more of a walkability component or figure out a way with the county to continue to go around the bayou, I'm still, you know, in support of that if it's probable. If it's not probable, you know, I think we need to go ahead and bite the bullet and do something here. So, you know, I'll stand by as well and see what everybody else has to say, but that's, that's kind of where I'm at tonight.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Robertson, for the presentation and reaching out in advance in the meeting. How will covering the rocks, if we move forward with this, affect flooding and erosion? Or is this going to be purely aesthetic?
This is purely aesthetic. This won't have any effect on that.
Okay. And then it says funding has yet to be identified. Do we have any idea of the options there? Or would it just, you know, kind of decide tonight and figure it out?
For the design, the fifty thousand dollars, we've still got about two hundred and twenty thousand in the money of the penny that we haven't spent yet. So the place we would get that for, if you decided to go that direction, would be from that assigned to the penny money.
Okay. And then something, Mr. Robertson, that you mentioned to me, which I thought was really creative, was possibly how the dredging might be able to help us and using some of that material. Can you explain that a little bit?
Sure. You know, the cost that I, this four hundred and fifty thousand cost estimate covers the cost of everything. This is the purchase of materials, raw materials by contractor and them doing the work. One idea that I had is because we'll have the salvage on the materials from the dredge, especially after we move it on to city property, we are permitted by statute to use that material for municipal purposes, which means that we could use it to, for this, for this project. I didn't put that in that as a cost estimate because I want, I want to fully vet that out during design, but that is definitely an opportunity that we could, we could use to save some money on, on doing this project if we were to move forward with it.
Yeah, thank you. And I appreciate you getting, getting creative and getting back to us with at least something more concrete. It says the design and permitting cost proposal would be fifty thousand. The conceptual construction cost would be approximately four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, I mean, me personally, I'm not willing to spend over five hundred thousand dollars on something that's going to be purely aesthetic. But in terms of looking at some of the other ideas mentioned tonight, you know, I, I feel like we've talked about some stuff that isn't purely aesthetic, maybe stuff that people can walk on, that kind of thing. So I guess my comment tonight would be to, to kind of step back from it and determine where we want to go. And just make sure we answer, you know, no matter what we do, how's it going to affect flooding? Is it going to be more than just purely aesthetic? And then how much is it going to cost? Because this would be over half a million dollars, and this would just be really replacing the rocks with grass.
Thank you. Commissioner take yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Robertson. I, I enjoyed your, reading your memorandum. It was short, to the point, easily understood, so.
Thank you.
For anybody, actually. So, Mayor, I'm not sure. I, I know you had a conversation with Vice Mayor Carr, and I couldn't quite hear you. What, what was your concept that you were talking about? Building out the land?
Well, try to extend the area out to the bayou and recover the area that it was before. And if you look at those pictures that are provided to you.
I understand.
You can see that. You probably remember that we used to go there, you know, to, when we had the Fourth of July fireworks and all. It was pretty wild. Now it's hardly any land left.
Right.
So the idea from, from the residents is to extend out and recover the area that it was lost over the years.
Yeah, not necessarily a dock or a boardwalk or anything like that.
No, it was just talking about extending that where people can enjoy the, the area.
Yeah, and, and I'm glad you reached out to Pinellas County. We discussed this exactly three months ago. I know the milestone that you were supposed to get back to the board was the first week of December, so I know you're answering the mail in that regard. So I appreciate you meeting that milestone as well. And, and Pinellas County has no plans, and I said three months ago, if, if they have no plans, I'm, I'm not going to support a trail nowhere unless we have a clear concept that they're going to participate. And I just don't think that they are at this point. And as far as the trail goes, we had the three options that were on their, actually on their brochures. One was the one we're discussing right now, Woodcombe Boulevard all the way out Gulf Road. Another one was around Riverside. And then the third one was Mears Boulevard. Despite not getting a trail from the east side of town to the west side of town in this particular manner, maybe we could look at, from a trail perspective, maybe striping along Mears or something and getting us out to Florida Avenue and getting down that way, something simple that maybe the Pinellas, I know that's a county road, maybe something that they could participate in that. So those were the three options, and it was in their long range plans. I, what is the status of the surveying right now? I, I know there is, I, some little red marker flags on that area. The surveying that we approved, what, what is the status of that?
That work is, is still ongoing. It's really in the early stages.
Did they give us any timeframe of when that would be complete?
No, I don't have a timeframe on that yet, but.
You, what do you think, obviously after Christmas, but maybe January?
That's probably reasonable, but I'll check on that.
Yeah. And, and also three months ago, I said I'd really like to take a comprehensive approach to this, not try and piecemeal it or throw money at this and see if this works and, and, and that sort of thing. And the one thing I, I would like to get is the surveying back as far as the data goes to show us where the low points are. And that, and, and from that perspective, I, right now, I, I think it's premature to do anything. I would like to do a little long range planning, what is our vision for that area? And I discussed very briefly with the city manager that I wouldn't just support sodding. I, and I appreciate Cardno, but at some point, we need to get away from Cardno, maybe hire a professional landscape architect to develop some kind of a plan along Spring Boulevard, if that's what we're talking about, to incorporate landscaping, not just sod, so that we have something that looks nice when we're done, rather than just grass that, you know, grows and we get the city crews out there. Getting back to what the mayor said forty years ago, that was a park along that part of Spring Boulevard, and that was taken out, a combination of erosion and the revetment, that was taken out as part of this project. And, and so we lost the park in that regard, but there is still room to put benches and trees and that sort of thing with what's remaining. I do know the laws have changed. Actually, I, I worked on a project about two years ago where if you can demonstrate there's some safety issues with regard to the right of way and stabilization, the state will allow you to build out that land as you're describing, Mayor. So it's something that we should look into, but not necessarily spend a whole lot of money on that right now to investigate what are the laws and what are our options in that regard before we start putting pen to paper as far as coming up with some kind of a design. The, I do know that the, we've had some residents in the community that have been pursuing some brand new FEMA grants for just the sort of thing that you're talking about, Mayor, with flood prevention as well, looking at concepts such as living shorelines and living seawalls that fall into the sort of thing that you're talking about. And, and, and that presentation was made by Dr. Paul Sullivan, I'm sorry, Dr. Paul Robertson, Robinson, to the Sustainability Committee, and I think that was put on hold at that point. But those grants are real. I think Dr. Robinson had some professional help in the form of Arcatis, which is a Danish firm that is close to FEMA and does these sort of projects. Maybe that's something that the commission should want to hear his presentation on this. They actually had a representative of Arcatis accompany him during that presentation, sustainability. It might give everybody a better idea of what are our options there, rather than just talking about them and maybe putting one, all of our eggs in one basket with regard to Cardno and what they would come up with as far as a, a design goes. The, the, the amount of money that we have, I, I really think at this point, I, I, I think that we need to kind of have some discussion of what we're really looking for. I think, Mayor, your idea, the idea of the residence is actually a good point of departure on that. Other residents have discussed actually putting in a swale and then building out another berm beyond that so that we don't eliminate the mangroves that are there, but actually create a swale between that, build out another berm where this, where the walkway, the landscaping and everything is beyond that. So there's a number of ideas out there floating. I think from the most part, given that the way the laws have changed, they're, they're realistic. It just depends on how much money you want to spend on it and how much time you want to wait on it. So I guess the bottom line for me is that I'd like to continue pursuing some kind of a trail that connects the east part of town to the west part of town. And also want to really do something about this area here with the revetment and the rip wrap. But I'm not really interested in spending a half a million dollars on just sodding with grass. I'd like to do something a lot nicer, that, something that looks more permanent, rather than just a Band-Aid over covering some rocks. So perhaps at this point, we could ask the city staff to maybe do a very, very small level of effort investigative work on what the laws would allow us to do and what they wouldn't allow us to do, and maybe get some feedback from FEMA in that regard as well. And also think we need to have some kind of a, a little bit of more of a cohesiveness as far as what we want to do. Three, we've discussed this a number of times over the past five years. The last time was three months ago. A, a couple of weeks after that, we came up. A couple of weeks after that, we came up with a roundabout at MLK. Then we decided we're going to do the, the survey work to determine what are the flood prone areas along Spring Boulevard. And now we've got another idea that's come forward from the residents. I think all of that is good, but somewhere along the line, we need to kind of get a little more coordinated as far as what we really want to do, rather than just coming up with a new idea every three, three or four months. So I'm not sure if that discussion helps, but I'm not interested in spending $50,000 right now to, to do the design on sodding that area. I'd like to have a little more information along the lines of flood proofing, looking at it more comprehensively, and also along the line of building out our shoreline and going from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Just for clarification, Mr. Robinson, what does it take to verify that this option can be accepted by the Army Corps of Engineers?
Typically, it's going to take a set of design plans and specs. That's what we've been told many times. But I could at least begin the investigation that Commissioner Vaticiottis is recommending, and we could probably do that in-house with minimal effort, as suggested.
Okay, thank you. We go to the public comments. If anyone has any comments, please come forward to the podium. We hear none. Ms. Jacobs, have we received any emails?
No emails are received.
Thank you. Mr. Jump, do we have anybody on Zoom that wishes to speak on this item?
If anybody would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do have a raised hand, sir. And if you could state your name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is Mary Coburn. I live at 425 South Spring Boulevard, Tarpon Springs, Florida, right there on the bayou. If I could just comment, I appreciate what you're doing. I think the number one priority for us that live here in this area is, is the flooding issue. That has got to be addressed. Now, of course, I wish I could still kayak from my front yard like I used to. I can't do that anymore because of the rocks. But it is, you know, the safety issue has been mitigated by the sidewalk that you put in. People are using the sidewalk. I see them walk by my house every day, and they continue around the bayou. So it's not as emergent as it was. I would prefer that the city, instead of doing this Band-Aid with the sodding and the grass, which I honestly don't think is going to be effective, I would prefer the city look at it from a comprehensive view and do, do it right this time. Because what happened out there was not the right thing to do, and now we're having to try to mitigate. So I would prefer a comprehensive approach that includes flooding. And also, like the mayor said, we look at getting the land back that we lost through erosion and other, other means and, and make it really beautiful like Edgewater Drive. I mean, it could, it was beautiful. I remember it as a child. It can still be beautiful again. I think it's within our power. It's going to be expensive. You have to plan for it. You have to have a long term plan, but that would be my approach. Otherwise, you're wasting money on this, this effort to put sod there. It's going to raise it considerably. We still don't know what the effect is of flooding. I just, I just don't think it's worth the money, and I would prefer that the commission spend it differently. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jump, do we have anybody else online?
If anyone else would like to speak, please raise your hand. And we do not have any raised hands at this time, sir.
Thank you. This presentation is also related with the item number 14.
I'm sorry, say that again.
This presentation that we just, it's also related with item number 14. So that we're going to consent agenda. Number three is satisfaction release of liens. Number four is the attorney fees. Johnson and Jackson invoice 7021. Number five is a special event light up the bayou, December 24, 2020. Number six is the word file number 210057, N J L single source purchase on off on base maintenance and support. Number seven is the word file number 210060, N J L sanitary sewer manhole and lift station, wet well rehabilitation. And number eight is the increase file number 20063, N J L single source purchase of Flowserve pumps, parts and accessories. Number nine is the award file number 210051, C J L purchase of bunker gear utilizing Lake County contract number 17-0606G for fire equipment supplies. Number 10 is the award file number 210068, C A M auctioneer services of vehicles and related equipment, Pinellas County contract number 190537RJJ. Number 11 is to authorize execution of maintenance agreement with Pinellas County for the city gateway sign to be situated with the Pinellas County on right of way. Number 12 is the award file number 210067, C A M motor vehicle parts utilizing school board of Pinellas County contract 21-060-081RN. And number 13 is the award file number 210031, N J L single source purchase of lift station supervisory control and data accusation system. Any of those items that you'd like to pull? Number five? Any other item that you'd like to pull? No? Okay. Do we have any comments on the items? Three through your 13 with the exception of five? Need a motion?
Motion to approve items three through 13 less five.
Thank you.
Second.
Are there any public comments on this item? You're none? Ms. Jacobs, have we received any emails?
No emails.
Mr. Jump, do we have any attendees wishing to speak?
If anyone would like to speak, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time, sir.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticiottis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terpenny?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor Alahuzis?
Yes, item number five, special event light up the bayou, December 24, 2020, Vice Mayor Carr.
Yeah, I just want to highlight this one a little bit more. Thank you, Mayor. Mark, if you could touch base on this one a little bit more, what the city's done with the Sunset Hills for the plan for this?
Yes, obviously, with the times, this was something everybody was wondering if we were going to be able to pull off or not with the times. We had a meeting onsite on Friday morning to make sure. We had Sunset Hills, we had our fire chief, and we had Tom Function. And we went down to discuss, they had sent us a letter, that's in your backup letter, or some of their ideas of thinking how they could do this. They met with us with our ideas, and the memo you have from December 8 is a consensus from that meeting of, of the city and the school agreeing on what we could do to make this event, you know, this memorable yearly event that we've had, that we could do this within, you know, the conditions of COVID now, how we could do it and how we made it the safest. So those conditions on there were agreed on, and we're able, I think, to a large amount of the community's joy to have this this year with everything going on.
Yeah, do you know where the entrance is going to be? Do you have any of that information?
Not yet. You want to talk, Scott?
Scott Young, Fire Chief. When we talk to them about it, they are going to have the entrance over by the Craig Park, and it'll be one way through the bayou. And they, they're going to stretch the bags out. They wanted to do six feet. We recommended 10 feet, just so we have a little bit more of a buffer. So it's going to, they believe they should spread the bags out for the entire part of the bayou there. The exit would be on the far west north side, I guess, or towards the bridge, that area. That way, they have a handicap access both sides too. So they can come back out and walk the sidewalk to come back to their cars that way.
Okay, so it'd be like Canal Street area, and then they would exit over across the street and go down in front of the houses?
Yes.
And I think the memo talked about, are we going to have any police patrol helping? Because that's a dangerous corner right there.
Yes, yes, for that event and the night of it, for crossing and that sort of thing, we will have a plan put together for the safety of the people having to take this route and stuff. Yes, we will.
Yeah, I mean, I've been critical about this event in the past, but the bags have been too tight to begin with. It's going to be great. I think it's going to be beautiful to stretch it out. I mean, technically, it could go probably from the boat ramp all the way around the bayous through Craig Park to Canal Street at the end of the day. I think it looks a lot better. I think it's going to, the one way makes sense. So I'm in support of this. I just, I want to bring some attention to it because I know everyone looks forward to this each year. And I'm encouraged by the city, the steps that the staff did to work with the school to still have the fundraiser go on. So, thank you.
Thank you. We need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any commission comments? Any public comments on these item number five? Ms. Jacobs, any emails?
No emails.
Do we have anyone wishing to speak on this, on this item?
If anyone would like to speak on the item, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time, sir.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticiottis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terpenny?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor Alahuzis?
Yes. We're going to the special consent agenda item number 14, direction on Spring Boulevard. And this is what we talked about related to number two, presentation that we had.
Again, this item was put on in case we had to take a vote, for instance, approving the thing. I think, I think we've got your direction from the presentation. I think we've got your direction to go forward. But if we did have an item and you wanted to approve the $50,000 and stuff to make a recommendation like that, that's why it was put on the agenda in case you had to take a vote. I think Mr. Robertson has clear direction from the board on where to go to here. So I don't think there's any action or stuff that needs to be taken here unless the board wants to.
Okay. Mr. Trask, what's the best way of handling that? Is that to defer it or since it's on the agenda?
Well, it's, it's a discussion item, give direction. And so I don't think that there's anything that you do need to do. You've already given the direction, and you just did it in a prior agenda item.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Is any commission comments, any, anything that you want to comment on that?
I've got a comment. I just, this is something that we've talked about. I don't know. I don't want to exaggerate maybe 10 times. So if I could just ask maybe Mr. Robertson, if you could come up and give a summary of what the consensus is, or if you want to go back and watch the meeting. I just want to make sure we're all on the same page, that we're not back here six months and have another discussion and back in the same situation again. So, thank you.
Certainly. Bob Robertson, Project Administration Department Director. So, thank you for the question, Vice Mayor. I think I heard a lot of things, but certainly where the direction was to not move forward with the soil and sod idea. But instead, expand that into looking into other options, including expanding out the shoreline area potentially, potentially looking at the state law that allows build out options to address safety concerns that Commissioner Vaticiottis mentioned. And trying to approach it with a more comprehensive approach to possibly address flooding, using the survey data that is pending, the topographic survey data that is pending, the geotech data that is pending, all the work that's going on now, and come back with you, to you with a, a couple more better fleshed out ideas.
Okay.
Is my understanding correct?
Sounds right to me.
I think it's very clear, right?
Yeah.
Everybody agrees?
I just wanted to, can we agree to something like three months after the survey is complete to come back to the commission like we did last time? We, we agreed three months last time to come back this week. It seems like it worked out well, rather than losing this. That would, that should give.
Is that enough time for you to?
From the time the surveying is complete to where you've got that information, three months, and you can explore a little more that way.
Thank you. Yeah, that feels like a reasonable amount of time.
Okay.
You say three weeks?
Three days.
Nice try, Vice Mayor. Nice try. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to item number 15, which is settlement of code enforcement lien, 1113 East Lime Street. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present this item?
Yes, so the property located at 1113 East Lime Street is a property that has a number of code enforcement cases on it and violations in liens, one of which is against a company by the name of TC12 LLC, which was the owner of the property at one time. That particular lien is the one that we're talking about. It's a 2016 lien. The lien value was approximately $19,300. I got a call from an individual who wanted to resolve that lien because of the fact that it was a cross collateralized lien on a property that the company also owned in Clearwater. What he was asking for is a release of the Clearwater property from that lien in exchange for a settlement offer that he made. The original settlement offer was $1,000. City staff and I negotiated the settlement up to $6,000. The offer right now before you is $6,000 in full settlement of the lien as it is attached to the Clearwater property. The lien still remains a valid lien against the property in Tarpon Springs, and you'll be hearing from the present owner with another settlement offer at the next meeting for the remainder of the liens. And so they won't be gone unpaid. You'll see another offer coming next, next meeting. So tonight, I'm asking for your authority to accept an offer of $6,000 for a company by the name of TC12 LLC to release a code enforcement lien on the Garden Avenue property in the city of Clearwater.
Thank you. Chair, will you obtain a motion?
Motion to settle for $6,000. Second.
New commission comments? Are there any public comments on this item? You know, Ms. Jacobs, have we received any emails?
No emails on this item.
Mr. Jump, do we have anybody on the Zoom that wishes to speak?
If anyone would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time, sir.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticiottis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terpenny?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor Alahuzis?
Yes. We are now going to the ordinance and resolutions. Item number 168 and 16B are related. 16B is quasi-traditional. These items will be discussed together, but we're going to vote separately. Item number 168 is the Anclot Isles, application 20-135, which was deferred from November 17, 2020. The ordinance 2020-35, future land use map amendment. This is the first reading, and I'd like to ask the city attorney to read the title and explain the quasi-traditional process.
Yeah, this is ordinance 2020-35. An ordinance of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the future land use map for 8.61 acres, more or less, of real property located on the southwest corner of Anclot Road and Marina Drive and known as Anclot Isles subdivision from land use designation CR, Commercial Recreation, to land use designation RL, Residential Low, providing for findings and providing an effective date. It was the first reading of ordinance 2020-35 by title only. There will be a second reading after the Pinellas County has reviewed the ordinance. It was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title with a map on October 28, 2020. I'll explain the quasi judicial procedures. This is a quasi judicial proceeding where the Board of Commissioners acts in a quasi judicial rather than a legislative capacity. At a quasi judicial hearing, it is not the board's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. In a quasi judicial hearing, the board is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing and apply those findings of fact. and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the Code of Ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The board may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. If the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established in the Code of Ordinances, then the board is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the Code of Ordinances, then the board is required by law to find against the applicant. With that being said, I need to swear in anyone that's going to speak on this agenda item. If you could stand up, raise your right hand, be sworn under oath. Swear the testimony about to give is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. Staff presentation?
Mark, can I get just a switch? How do we switch over to the? There we go. Thank you. So this is Anclot Isles, application 20-135. The city of Tarpon Springs is the applicant in this case as a result of a petition filed by more than 50% of the property owners in the Anclot Isles subdivision. This is a subject property. It's been developed, it was developed back in 1995 as a single-family detached residential subdivision. The property, however, carries a land use and zoning of commercial recreation and WD-1. So back in 1995, this was actually conditional use to develop this property, but it has remained in this use for, as single-family detached since it's been developed. So the purpose of this rezoning application, if you recall, this really came about as a result of some conditional use applications for vacation rentals in the subdivision that prompted a petition to the board, which the board agreed and took up. The, so the intent is to align the land use and zoning with the current, you know, and long-term utilization of the site as a single-family residential subdivision. So the proposal is to amend the land use from commercial recreation to residential low consistent with other similarly developed properties in the, in the, in the city, and to amend the zoning from WD-1, which is a waterfront development district, which allows for actually a lot of commercial uses, to RPD residential plan development. And we prefer the part, the planned development process to recognize the particular lot layouts and setbacks that are unique to this particular subdivision. The surrounding land uses, you have residential to the north. You have some industrial over here across this inlet back into the marina. Again, just the surrounding zoning. We do find that this is consistent with the comprehensive plan as well as the countywide plan. And we found it is consistent with rezoning criteria as laid out in Land Development Code and the comprehensive plan. And we do recommend approval of both the land use map amendment and the zoning atlas amendment. We have not received any public correspondence on this application. Planning and zoning board reviewed this on November 16th and did recommend approval of both ordinances. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions by the commission?
Yes. Ms. Vincent, what is the recommended zoning that you?
Residential plan development.
What's the difference with R-100 and R-100A?
So R-100 and R-100A have larger lot size requirements, although most of the lots in here wouldn't meet this, would meet it. In the WD-1 district, which is what it was developed as, the, it actually refers back to, for single-family, to the R-60 designation zoning wise. But that, the reason I don't want to put it into R-60 is because that would also allow duplexes. And there's large, lots in there are large enough for duplexes to, you know, to occur if they wanted to convert them. So by taking it to plan development, it's single-family only, and you can maintain the R-60 setbacks that were applied in 1995 when it was developed. Sorry, that was a little long-winded.
Okay, you have mentioned on your backup that surveys were not available because, maybe because it was built 20 years or so ago?
Surveys were not available.
I remember reading about that.
I mean, individual, we don't have individual lot surveys.
That's what I mean, yeah.
Oh, yeah, because these have been built, you know, developed back in the 1990s. So we're, yeah, we don't have individual lot surveys of every lot as part of the backup now. We have the subdivision plat, so.
Yeah. It wasn't a requirement at the time to have a survey for each lot?
When it was developed, there was a requirement to have, you know, for, for each individual home that came in, they would, eventually you would end up with a survey as a part of a transaction. I guess, is there? What's?
Well, what I'm trying to say is that even though that those buildings were done, it were, those houses were built 20 years ago, we should have some kind of a data shows the, or the, the survey for each one of individual houses, individual lots, correct?
We have the plats that show, you know, the lot layouts and, you know, they were, to my, they were built at that time to meet the R-60 setback requirements. So five-foot side yards, 20-foot front yards, 25-foot rear yards, I believe I'm quoting off the top of my head. So we want to remain consistent with that. We don't want to become more restrictive. So taking it to R-100 or R-100A would make it more restrictive than the way it was developed for the purposes of setbacks. So hence, if you take it to RPD, we can establish what the setbacks are and be consistent with how, how it was developed in the past and not change that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Trask, that's all I got.
Thank you. Any other questions from any other commissioners? Commissioner Vaticiottis?
Go ahead. Thank you. Ms. Vincent, the, the RPD, I'm not familiar with that part of the code. Does that allow conditional use for short-term rentals?
It does not.
It does not, so, okay. And, and I think some of the residents were, maybe some initial discussions of the R-100, R-100A. Are they aware of the RPD? Or is that, do you think that's an issue?
I don't think that's an issue. I really don't.
That's, that's, thank you.
They, they were clear that they wanted to be single-family residential.
I think that was important.
Correct.
Yes, I understand. Thank you.
Mr. Terpenny?
Thank you. Just to continue to highlight y'all's point a little bit, the reason why you're not going to R-100 or R-100A is because you'd make them all non-conforming.
Bingo. Yes.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we can go ahead and, since the city is the applicant, normally the applicant will make a presentation, but we can go right to the public at this point. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to discuss or make a presentation on this particular agenda item? I see none. Ms. Jacobs, did the city receive any emails on this particular agenda item?
No emails were received.
And Mr. Jump, is there anyone on Zoom that would like to make a presentation or speak?
If anyone would like to speak on the item, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time, sir.
Thank you. Ms. Vincent, are you submitting your staff report and evidence?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So mayor, it's back to the commission for consideration.
Thank you. Okay, this is for the item 16A. The chair will detain the motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
In roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticiottis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terpenny?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor Alahuzis?
Yes. Next is item 16B, the ordinance 2020-36, zoning. Our amendment first, first reading, this is again quasi-traditional relating to the 16A. I need a motion for that as well.
Mayor, I need to go ahead and read that ordinance by title only if I can, please.
Yes, please.
This is ordinance 2020-36, an ordinance of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the official zoning atlas of the city of Tarpon Springs for 8.61 acres, more or less, of real property located on the southwest corner of Anclot Road and Marina Drive, and known as Anclot Isles subdivision from zoning designation WD-1, waterfront development, to zoning designation RPD, residential plan development, providing for findings and providing an effective date. That was the first reading of ordinance 2020-36 by title only. There'll be a second reading after the Pinellas County has reviewed it. It was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title with a map on October 28, 2020.
Now, I will take the motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
Mayor, point of order.
Sure.
Just so we don't leave this item at the end of it. Ms. Vincent, can you, we're not going to be looking at the second readings until after February. Is that correct?
Probably in February.
I just wanted to make sure the commission was aware of that. Thank you, mayor.
In roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticiottis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terpenny?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor Alahuzis?
Yes, thank you. Item 17A and 17B are related. Both are quasi-traditional. These items will be discussed together, but we're going to vote separately. 17A is the Anclot Harbor application number 20-106, comma, 20-107, and 20-123. The ordinance 2020-34, prenumerated plan development and rezoning. This is the first reading, and again, this is quasi. I will ask the city attorney to read the title and explain the quasi-traditional process, but you already done that. So.
So I'll read ordinance 2020-34 by title only. An ordinance of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the official zoning map of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida for 72.62 acres, more or less, of real property located at 42501 US Highway 19 North. On the east side of US Highway 19 North, from the zoning designation of GB General Business, to zoning designation RPD, residential plan development, approving preliminary plan development for Anclot Harbor residential plan development, providing for waivers of design requirements of the RPD district, providing for findings and providing for an effective date. That was the first reading of ordinance 2020-34 by title only. There'll be a second reading held on December 15, 2020. This was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title with a map on October 28 and December 2, 2020. This is a quasi judicial proceeding. Anyone that wants to speak? I'm not going to read the procedures again, but if you're going to speak, if you could stand up, raise your right hand, be sworn under oath. Ms. Vincent, you've already been sworn in. Anyone else that wants to speak? Raise your hand. Is whether the testimony you're about to give is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So mayor, city staff would make its presentation first?
Yes.
And Mark, can we switch to the presentation screen? Okay, thank you. So this is applications 20-106 for preliminary plan development, 20-107 for rezoning. Both of those are contained in ordinance 2020-34. An application 20-123, conditional use, which is contained, enacted by the resolution. This is the Anclot Harbors project. Tonight, they are seeking prelim, first reading of preliminary plan development and rezoning, as well as approval of the conditional use. Project location is at 42501 US Highway 19 North. The project in total contains 70, approximately 72 acres, of which 64 acres are actually, the 64 acres does not include submerged lands on the site. Sorry. So this is the general location along US 19 and bordered by the Anclot River on the north. Everyone knows this property, you know, generally it's known as the Walmart property. Future land use on the site is a mix of commercial, general land use, this pink color, and residential office, general on the, called the back half of the property. You also have some wetlands and some preservation on the site. The zoning on the entire site, this blue color, I'm sorry, the red color, this is all, the entire site is zone commercial general, which doesn't allow for residential development. It has a residential density of 15 units to the acre. Project overview, just kind of going by the numbers, the project, the preliminary, it's a, it's a planned development, 404 multifamily units in five buildings, along with substantial onsite recreation amenities for the residents. Again, no change to the future land use map is being proposed. They are rezoning from general business to RPD residential plan development, since it's more consistent with the type of development that's necessary. Of the 64 acres, 42 acres are uplands. 21 acres of wetlands will remain in preservation status. Six acres of uplands will actually be proposed to go to rec open space. There's areas done in this area. Significantly, there are 29 acres of significant upland habitat as identified by our comprehensive plan, and they're preserving nearly 12 acres of that. So a little deeper dive into the project acreages, and that's, sorry that this is overlapping this break in the screen. So as I said, 72 total acres roughly, eight, almost eight and a half submerged. So your total, you know, non-submerged lands are 64 acres, 42 acres uplands, 22 acres wet. Of that 64 roughly acres, 29 are proposed to be developed, and 34, almost 35 acres would remain as undeveloped. They are proposing to impact .91 acres of uplands, excuse me, wetlands, and those will be mitigated on site. And as I stated, they're approximately 30, 29 acres of significant upland habitat, and they are proposing to preserve a little over 30% of that. This is the overall site plan. I know this is really difficult to see, so hopefully you've had a chance to review it in your, or if I can make this larger. Failing with my PowerPoint. You have five buildings on the site, your primary entrance coming off of US 19, only one entrance is being proposed. They're proposing offset left turn lanes north and south of the project to allow for access into the site from southbound. So you would do a U-turn, come into the site. And similarly, if you're trying to go southbound on US 19 and you're exiting, you would go through the channelization. I know the applicant has a much more detailed presentation on this, so I won't dwell on this too much. But those are improvements to the, to the transportation, the operational characteristics of the site that are being proposed, as well as a deceleration lane for property, properties entering the site. Proposed heights are 53 feet. That, this is one of the waivers that is, one of the two waivers being requested. The, the RPD height is 45 feet. By allowing them to go to 53 feet, it allows them to, to basically not add another building onto the site. So it allows it to cluster and preserve additional space. So we are recommending approval of that particular waiver. Project amenities. Let me see if I can get to this where I can read it a little better. They have a clubhouse and swimming pool, leisure walking trails, various exterior gathering places, playground facilities, a pet park facility, kayak and canoe launch, the Anclot River, an Anclot River boat dock, and nature walking trails throughout the site. Just a general high-level overview of the landscape plan. Again, this is difficult to see in this environment on the screen, but they do have a, a good preliminary landscape plan that does meet the requirements for the site itself. And they'll have to do a final, final, you know, landscape and tree removal mitigation plan as part of the final plan development. These are tree species that are proposed for the site. Traffic impacts. As we said, the property is proposed for 404 units, which adds about 2,200 additional trips per day on US 19. The PM peak hour, PM is the peak hour of the, of the traffic, traffic generation with an additional 178 trips. The applicant, they, they used a conservative background growth rate of 2% for the, in the study area for the build-out for 2022. The US, the segment of US 19 is currently operating at a level of service C. It is a tier-one project for transportation impact reviews according to our Land Development Code, which does require them to have a transportation management plan to address impacts. You know, they are reducing density on the site by the land use in place. They could actually have up to 485 units, so that the, the unit count is below what would be allowed. They're providing a lot of onsite amenities to basically keep people on the site, if you will. They have a good pedestrian system throughout. They're proposing things like, you know, onsite business center to, you know, so for people working from home, they can stay there. They do have proposal for some electric vehicle charging and just promoting commuter assistance for the residents. There's a single driveway connection to U.S. nineteen. It's proposed to be right in, right out, as I stated earlier, with offset left turn median openings. There, there's a slight degradation of vehicle, vehicular volume to capacity ratios at the intersections, which are already a failing level of service, but at the end of the day, according to their traffic analysis, excuse me, keep hitting the wrong button. The delay time increase between the background project traffic and the projected build-out is about two seconds in that those intersections. So it's, it's a minimal impact on the actual intersection functions. DOT has preliminarily looked at this and has, I'm sure their engineers will talk more about that. They still will have to provide an additional traffic study to FDOT and get final approval for the design. The project does propose construction of a new wastewater force main from the site, going back to the treatment plant to, to handle wastewater flows for the site. Under our, again, kind of our high-level review criteria, we, we do find that it is consistent with the, with the comprehensive plan. There are public facilities, you know, we have sufficient capacity to serve the project. Again, they will be doing some significant wastewater improvements, as well as operational improvements to the transportation system for the entrances. They've taken an environmental approach, frankly, to the, to the development of the site. They're clustering the buildings. They're setting aside significant amounts of, of open space and providing a lot of recreational amenities. The, you know, the property is resident, it's going to be residential, it, you know, from a compatibility standpoint to surrounding properties, you know, compared to what could go on the site, this is, you know, much desirable, as opposed to a large commercial development, which would be permitted on the site. There are two waivers, as we talked about, included in the ordinances. One is the waiver to the building height, increasing the building height from forty-five feet to fifty-three feet. The second waiver I didn't specifically talk about was for the requirements for a, a development of this size. Typically, you would have a second entrance into the site. They are requesting to be allowed to only have one vehicular access to the, to the site. They do have three, three lanes, you know, two lanes entering and one lane exiting the site, and our city fire marshal does concur with the proposal as it's presented. The only acceptable second access would be through the residential subdivision to the adjacent to the east. It's a minimal right-of-way. So it really would not be palatable to try to enter or exit traffic through that residential neighborhood. So, and, and DOT is really only going to permit one, one entrance and exit out of the site. So we're, we're okay with this proposal, and the, and the fire marshal has reviewed it and is, has preliminary blessed it as well. So the staff recommendation is approval of ordinance two thousand twenty dash thirty-four for the preliminary plan development and rezoning with the waivers. There are nineteen conditions on the ordinances. I, I do want to draw attention to condition number fourteen, which talks about the applicant donating a one-point-eight-four acre parcel of property to the city for the purposes of public recreation. And if I'll, I'm going to go back to a previous slide and give you a visual of where that is. So this, this is the property boundary all the way around the site. So up here, this northwest corner of the site, so this is the river around here, you know, that's the water line approximately. This area in here is, the applicant is proposing to donate that to the city for the purposes of a, of a passive park, with maybe, you know, with a kayak pullout, some passive facilities. The, and this will be a, you know, a point of discussion for the board. The applicant is also requesting that those, that that donation of land be counted toward, as a credit toward their recreation open space, impact fees based on the fair market value of the property. I have just a really brief slide that I'll, we can go back and talk with if you want to get into depth with this tonight. But I wanted to introduce the idea. So under the city code, under payment of fees for impact fees, there is a, there's a section that says that the board can't accept an in-kind contribution of real personal property for public use, which serves the same public purposes for which the impact fees are imposed. So, and it has to be based on fair market value of the property. So that is what they are asking for. The fair market value would have to be determined, but this is, this is a matter for the board to decide. It is your purview. So I'm just bringing that into the discussion for this evening. I have some additional numbers about an estimate of what that property might be worth based on the current property appraiser values, if we can talk about it, if we get into that. So circling back, staff is recommending approval of both the, the conditional use, as well as the ordinance rezoning, and, and with the plan development, inclusive of the conditions that are in the ordinance and outlined in the staff report. We did receive public correspondence today on the property that all those have been forwarded to the board for your consideration. Planning and zoning board reviewed this on November sixteenth. They did recommend approval with one member dissenting in the vote. So I'll stop there. I know the applicant has a, probably a more detailed presentation than I did. There's just a lot to unpack with this. So it was a little bit high level, you know, we can get into, as you have questions, and we'll get into, deeper into the details if necessary. Our transportation engineering consultant is online available for detailed questions about, you know, because we did have the, the engineering, the traffic study reviewed by them. And Pat McNeese is also in the office, so there's nitty, you know, nitty-gritty details that need to be dug into. I'll have her helping me as well. So with that, I'll stop and answer questions at the appropriate time.
Does the commission have any questions of Ms. Vincent?
Mr. Trask, I do. I have several questions, and I'm not sure if all of them go to Ms. Vincent, by the way, that very nice presentation. Thank you. If you go back into the, to the shape of the property, there's a triangle missing there. Does that belong to the city?
It does, yes.
Okay. And what are we going to use that? Is it something that we have any purpose for there, or?
The, I don't think there's any identified purpose for that property as we speak. I would defer to the city manager, but to my knowledge, there's no, no plan for it at the moment.
It's okay. We'll find out later on that. Thank you. Is it going to be, any impacts on the, on the wetlands?
Of the roughly twenty-two acres of wetlands that are on the site, less than one acre will actually be impacted, and that will be mitigated on site. So there's a couple of, there's a couple of small, isolated wetland areas that are identified that really can't be avoided. And so, but those will be mitigated on site.
Thank you. As you stated, that the applicant is asking for two waivers. One is the height of the building from forty-five to fifty-three feet. Of course, that's going to provide more open space, which I think is better for the environment. Does our fire department is capable of serving fifty-five feet?
Yes, they are. They've, they've reviewed this.
I know we're purchasing new truck ladder.
I don't think we need to purchase any new truck ladders, so.
Thank you. The, the second waiver was they requesting to have one interest instead of two. I'm concerned about the traffic that will be developed on U.S. nineteen. The cars that have to turn north and then south on U.S. nineteen. I, I'm just worried about safety concerns there. And also, when the cars have to cross three lanes to turn, to turn around, are there any improvements are going to be made on U.S. nineteen, yeah, in order for that, for that many vehicles to be able to, to, uh, to cross three lanes to get to the turning lane?
Oh, I'll, the, the short answer is, is, is yes, but I'm going to defer to the, the applicant's engineer. Mr. Hatton is here, and he did an excellent job of explaining this to the planning and zoning board, so I think it'll be better for him to explain that.
Okay. I'm sure Mr. Armstrong is taking notes on that. He'll answer that later. Thank you. He raised his hand. He said, yes. You mentioned that the FDOT is requesting additional traffic study to include bicycle and pedestrian traffic. What are we looking for there? Can you please explain to us?
I am not totally up to speed on what FDOT is actually going to require as part of their, of their traffic study. Mr. Hatton may be able to answer that. It's just noted that they, they will, it's noted in their DO, in the letter, the preliminary letter that we have from DOT, when they looked at the proposal, that an additional traffic, traffic study will have to be performed for DOT that addresses bicycle and pedestrian access.
Okay. Well, I'm sure the next one's probably for the applicant as well. The developer will not donate, but he's going to get some credits to the, to give us an area for a city self-park. My question is, where are the people, where the residents are going to park in order to use? Where are they going to park their vehicles in order to be able to use this city park?
The, the park is proposed to be completely passive, so the only access would be either from the river or via bike or pedestrian from U.S. nineteen. So there will not be an area where, you know, a city resident can come and park on site and go to that, go to that park. It would be, it would have to be accessed via, they'll have a sidewalk connection from U.S. nineteen. So if you're coming from the trail by bike or pedestrian, you can walk to the site, or you can access the site from the river as like a passive, passive kayak pullout area. That's what it was intended to be.
How are they going to get to the sidewalk of U.S. nineteen?
That, it's, they would either, primarily, they would probably come from the trail, so, to from the south. It would be by walking or bike.
Okay, but they can actually access it by boat?
And they would be able to access it via, you know, via kayak. They would need some, some improvements to access it.
The water is deep enough to have a boat there?
Uh, kayaks.
Kayaks.
Yes.
Thank you. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the developer is offering ten thousand dollars to develop.
That has also been offered by the, by the applicant to the city to assist us in, in putting amenities onto the site.
Yeah. Do we know what's going to cost to, to build this park? I'm sure it's going to be more than ten thousand dollars.
I, it depends on what the board wants there. You know, if you want a very passive place to just, you know, walk your kayaks out of the water and have a place to, you know, take a break from the river, that's probably not that expensive. If you want to put in some sort of a boardwalk access, now it gets more expensive. I, I don't have numbers for you for that.
Okay. I'm sure Mr. Armstrong will have an engineer to give us approximately how much they're going to cost. Say yes.
I will defer to Mr. Armstrong.
Okay. What is the density of the, of the development?
The actual density?
Yes.
Per acre?
Yeah.
I think I've calculated that. It's less than fifteen. It's less than fifteen. The, the permitted density is fifteen units to the acre. They're proposing, which would allow, you know, you do all the math and subtract out wetlands and things of that nature. They would be allowed to have four hundred and eighty-five units on the property. They are only proposing four hundred and four. So I'd have to run a quick calculation and divide that out for you. Apologize. I haven't done that.
I'm sorry. Look in the rendering of the buildings. It doesn't really represent Tarper Springs at all. Mr. Armstrong, I'm sure you have an answer with that. Maybe he can actually modify that to have, to include our culture that we have in Tarper Springs. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commission questions of Ms. Vincent?
I've got a couple.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Renee, you mentioned something along the lines of you'd have an idea what a fair market value that land would be. Can you get into a little more detail for that for me?
Sure.
And then I saw your email earlier today, too, while you were looking that up, that the recreation impact fees are going to be around three hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars.
Correct.
And they're asking for a credit on that based on the fair market value of this piece of land?
Correct. So my back of the envelope, looking at the entire site as it's appraised now by the, by the property appraiser, if you exclude the submerged lands as part of the calculation, the value per acre on the entire site is about eighty-four thousand dollars per acre. If you exclude submerged lands and the wetlands and just use that acreage, the value is about a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars per acre. So based on the one-point-eight acres that they're proposing, and again, I don't know the breakdown of what that actual acreage is. I don't know if it's all upland, if it's uplands and some, you know, wetlands or part of it submerged. So just using one-point-eight, an estimated valuation range, just based on what the property's valued today, would be between a hundred and fifty-five thousand and two hundred and thirty-five thousand.
Okay. Had, do you know if the city's had any issues with homeless camps on this property at all?
Um, I would have to defer to.
The chief on that one.
Okay, that's, we're going to finish the questioning here, and then with, if you want to, we can pull up the police, police chief to answer other two questions. But we have a witness that is presenting right now, so we need to finish with her and go through the formal process, Vice Mayor.
Okay. And then there's no acceleration lane, right, that the applicant has proposed, just a deceleration?
Correct.
Okay. What is staff, I mean, your thought of the, they're going to propose U-turns to DOT? Did you say the staff has a, a traffic engineer, or is that the applicant that has a traffic engineer for that?
They, they're, I mean, they have their own traffic engineers. We had the, the traffic study reviewed by our consultants. And they're, you know, they're generally, you know, you have to provide access to the site. So the, what's being proposed with the offset turn lanes is safer, is a safer operation than, you know, a central median, you know, dual access. I'll let them discuss that more. But, but generally, yes, and DOT has preliminarily accepted that, that alignment.
Okay.
Do you know the total parking spots? I, I was trying to find it in the backup, and that's something you have on hand. I could wait to the applicant on that one.
Hold on. I have it in the table here. I thought I had it in the table. Oh, I don't remember the number off the top of my head. I do know that it is compliant with our, our requirements.
Okay. I don't have any further questions right now. Thank you.
Any other commission questions? Commissioner Donovan?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. It was super detailed and reaching out in advance of the meeting. I think I got a lot of good, good details out of the way there. So I'm, I'm just trying to clarify or get a better grasp of the actual land that's being impacted. I know we had discussed how there's twenty-two acres of wetland, and, you know, just under one acre is being impacted. But what about the total site? So it's sixty-four point one-seven acres. Do you have the math on that as far as the impact goes?
I, I do. Can we switch back to the over, to the presentation, Mark? Just for everyone's benefit. So you have, so the total un-submerged lands, you've got sixty-four, roughly sixty-four acres, excluding the submerged lands. Of that, forty-two acres is uplands, twenty-two acres is wetlands, or are wetlands. The areas to be developed of that total non-submerged thirty acres, roughly just under thirty acres is proposed to be developed. Roughly thirty-five acres would be, you know, undeveloped opens, or open space, stormwater, things of that nature. So does that, does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does. So, so the undeveloped, that would also include like the walking trails, that kind of stuff?
Correct.
Okay. And is there any public access for those walking trails, or is that just going to be for residents?
It would just be for residents.
Okay. Do you, do you know at all how they intend to enforce it? Like, is there just going to be no parking spots for the public, or?
I believe it will be gated access in, so you just won't be able to get into the site.
Okay. And then as far as the donation. Okay. Um, and then as far as the donation goes, and this might be more just kind of planting a bug in the commission's ear. It's, it's 1.1.84 acres, correct?
Correct.
So what if we, what if we accept the donation of the land, but we don't actually make it a park and we just leave it as preservation? Do you know like the quality of the land currently? Would, is that, is that something that we'd be able to do?
Just put it into preservation?
Mm-hmm.
Certainly, yes.
Okay. That's, that would be my preference because it sounds like right now it'd just be pretty inaccessible by car, that kind of thing. It would mostly just be like a kayak rest spot. I would rather just not even touch it and just leave it, uh, as preservation if we could. And then as far as the traffic goes, um, I, I guess, actually I'll save that for the applicant.
Okay.
That's fine. Thank you.
Commissioner Terp, any questions? No? Okay. Commissioner Vaticius, any questions?
I have a number of them.
Please.
And I'm just going to just go through these. Some of these are going to be for the applicant, some of them for you. The, um, I, I know you kind of just jumped into this. Um, we've got the first readings this week. We've got second readings that next week. Can you kind of go over the process as far as the timing of, um, this whole process?
Sure.
When we can make changes to things, when we no longer have the opportunity to change, make changes to things?
So what you're reviewing tonight at first reading is preliminary plan development. So certainly any changes between now and next week with second reading, again, it's preliminary plan development. Once that's approved and you have, you know, the, these conditions of approval, um, they're, they're fairly broad. They still have to, they have one year to submit then for final plan development. And that will come back exclusively to the board for your review. So at that point in time, again, you would be evaluating, um, the same conditions that are here. There are certain things that have been put off, if you will, for final plan development. So even at final plan development, you know, as long as you're not, I think dramatically, you know, really changing something radically, you know, you can do, you can do tweaks along the way at final plan development as well.
Okay, so the, the final would be about when, did you say?
They, they have one year to submit for final plan development. Then they would go to construction. And then the next steps, you know, would be to, they're not going to be doing any plating, so that would just, you know, that would be the end of it.
Okay. And you and I briefly discussed this for the commission and also the residents out there because I know it's very important. Oftentimes when we see a large parcel like this of, uh, 72 acres and 60 acres of upland, and it's not as well, uh, developed as you would normally see, putting 10 pounds in a five pound sack, you're always a little curious as to whether there'll be a phase two on this. And I think you answered that. And if you could just explain that to, for us and also the residents as well, why we're not going to see that.
Certainly. So once this project is developed, um, we have requirements to put, um, all the remaining wetlands into preservation status. We have a requirement to put the uplands, um, that are into recreation, open space that aren't going to be developed. So essentially we're removing any, any, uh, lingering development rights that might be out there. So it, once this project is completed, um, it will, it will be done.
Okay. Um, the, one of the biggest things I've seen on, on emails and other comments and things of that nature has been the, um, the, um, traffic, I guess, on this. And, um, the one thing that kind of stuck out to me, and, and I want to follow up with this with the applicant as well, is why we agreed to a single point of access for this project with given so many residences that are going to be on there.
The, and, and as I, I'll let the applicant talk to that more, but from the city perspective, um, one, you know, we don't believe DOT would, would allow a second entrance off of US 19. So the way the site functions, it's just, you know, with distances and things, that would be difficult. The only secondary access that could be provided would be, um, and that can, let me just fix it. The only other place where you could have an access is there is a right of way over here that go, and it's, it's only a 40-foot wide right of way. And, and so then, then it would go, you know, through this pretty, you know, rural, single-family development area out here and out to, um, Jasmine. So it, it's really not ideal. Um, I mean, maybe as an emergency access only, but with the way that this was configured with the three lanes, our fire marshal was okay with this proposal and that's who I was really, we were deferring to as to, you know, from a safety standpoint about being able to get in and out of the site.
The, um, that right of way that you pointed out, uh, goes into Jasmine. And right before Sail Harbor, there's that, I don't know if you want to call it a roundabout or
Correct.
circle there. And you're saying that that wouldn't be appropriate for a second access?
I would not want to, to off, to potentially offload that amount of traffic through that residential area and onto Jasmine. As an emergency access, perhaps, yes.
Yeah. Just as a little history, this before, this before Walmart, it was the ABR property.
Yes.
And we had something like 2,000 employees on there. And one of the big things was, um, getting people on and off the site. And that rear access was something that was actually being planned. And there was a little bit of a barrier of a wetland, but that would easily be, uh, I, oh, basically addressed by either a bridge or by mitigation. So I, I'd like to hear a little more from the applicant on that. I understand that. But we're also talking about, um, not a real pleasant situation of wanting to go south on US 19 and having to make a right and then making a U-turn and then heading back south again. That, that's something.
Sure.
And I, I think that's something for the commission to at least think about at this point. The, um, that's, um, the, um, you, you had a chart in your staff report on the impervious surface ratio?
Yes.
I don't know if you, um, I was a little, um, confused over what the, um, it, it was kind of a summary table. And, and, um, I, I know it was probably good news, but I want to make sure it was good news because from my perspective, it's an undeveloped, underdeveloped site in terms of, um, what you can put on that.
And I don't think I have that in, I don't have that in the, in the, in the slides, but yes, the, you know, the, the impervious surface ratio over the entire site, um, is, as it's proposed, is 17.4% um, under the, um,
Let me see if I can.
Yeah.
Help you out a little bit.
Which is, is, you know, well below the, what, what would be allowed under the land use.
Yeah.
Yeah, this, yeah, this is.
We need to get in front of the microphones.
I'm sorry. Right. So, yeah, the, under the current zoning and land use, um, the, the actual impervious surface area that could be disturbed would be 75%. Um, what's actually proposed is 17.4%, so significantly less. Uh, Mayor, just kind of, just, well, he's still 6.3 dwelling units per acre.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you. The, um, the, um, your, your, um, 19, your 19 conditions that you placed on there. There were a couple of them that I had a question on, if I can find it. Apologize for kind of stumbling through this stuff.
There's a lot there.
272 pages of backup, by the way. Let me get back to those, um, here. Yeah. On the ninth, it's, uh, condition number four. The 50-foot buffer adjacent to the Anclot River shall remain and be managed as undisturbed uplands and should not be graded within the 25-foot wetland buffer required by Southwest Florida. That means that, um, Southwest Florida is requiring that it not be, uh, graded within 25 feet?
Correct.
That means. Number nine, the, um, detailed plans for utilities, connection, infrastructure, including wastewater, uh, construction shall be submitted with a final development plan along with documented coordination from all applicable agencies, landowners affected by construction. A final development plan, submittal that includes onsite infrastructure only may be scheduled for review.
Would you speak to the microphone, please?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
The submittal of the plans for the off-site public infrastructure will be required to be submitted and reviewed prior to scheduling for review by the Board of Commissioners. I'm, I'm not sure how that is supposed to work. In other words, that's going to be done. There is the final development plan. The construction plans are going to be ready before that as well for review.
So if I'm understanding correctly, what they're, what they wanted to be able to do is to, to submit, um, like an interim set of just for the onsite stuff to, for the technical review committee to review. But ultimately, yes, the entire plan, you know, all the utilities, everything will have to be the part of the final plan development that comes to the board, including the off-site as well. So.
And, and on that note, why, why is it that, because we're going to run this forced main from the site all the way back to pretty much the treatment plant, why aren't we doing a reclaim water line as well?
I don't have an answer for that.
I mean, I, I, just from a staff perspective, that wasn't discussed or thought about? I'm sorry.
Could be capacity.
Maybe capacity. We, we'll look at that between first, between now and second reading.
Well, I, if I'm not mistaken, Discovery Park or Jasmine Ballfields are being provided reclaimed by the county. At least at that, at some point in the past, that was. And, um, I would think that there are a number of neighborhoods out there that would, um, like to have, um, reclaimed water. And certainly this is going to be a big user of water. I mean, I would think it would be better to use reclaimed water than it would be potable.
Well, we'll, we'll, we'll track on that between now and second reading.
The, um, the applicant will donate an approximate 1.84 acres. About 0.85 acres of that is upland. The rest is submerged land. Um, it is an attractive location. I do have some questions for the applicant concerning the grading in that area. I'm, I'm not supportive of it being deducted from recreational impact fees. I won't support that. I think that's something that the, uh, that the developer contribute, uh, is part of this, um, wanting to be part of the community and, and, um, and, and utilizing this site. And it, it is a private community. 72 acres, um, is going to be, uh, is going to be private. And I think this is just a little bit that can be left as public. And as far as that, uh, project, that one lot, Mayor, and, and for, uh, I've given this some thought, um, for some time. That one lot that is the, um, city, I, I guess I should say, I should reserve this for discussion. Is that correct?
Yes, this is just questions only at this point.
I'm sorry. Let me just continue all with my questions. The, um, the, the tree mitigation plan, there's, there's, there's quite a few trees that are being taken out. Um, and, and I, if I'm not mistaken, about half of the trees, the, or the regulate, regulated, uh, regational trees are being taken out. And there's going to be considerable amount of, uh, planting that's going to, uh, planting that's going to take place. And, um, we're going to have a requirement of the survivability on that as well. Is that correct?
That's part of the code, yes.
The, um, and as far as the traffic study, that is going to be done at some point in the future? Yes, the DOT.
Yes.
Traffic study. And, um, and as far as what we're looking at, as far as the, the, the development plan, that driveway cut into that one parcel that city owned, that shouldn't be a problem as far as you're concerned with DOT?
In terms of, you're looking at distance separation from the intersection? Let me, I don't want to speak out of turn. I, that, that's been preliminary looked at by, the applicant may have that answer.
Okay. I think the, the rest of them are, I'm going to have to reserve that for the applicant. So thank you, Ms. Vincent. Thank you.
Thank you. So Mr. Armstrong, now's the opportunity to cross-examine. Uh, Ms. Vincent, if you have any questions of Ms. Vincent, before you make your presentation on behalf of the applicant.
No, sir. I have no questions of Ms. Vincent.
All right. Thank you. Uh, so Ms. Vincent, do you want to, um, are you asking that the staff report being received in evidence?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Armstrong, do you have any objection to that?
No, sir, no objection.
So Mayor, I would accept into evidence the staff report then?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Renee. So Mr. Armstrong, if you on behalf of the applicant would like to make a presentation?
Yes, sir, I would.
Is there any way you can get closer to the microphone? It's difficult for me to hear you.
How is this? This is better?
Hmm. You can probably move that if you want. If you want to move the podium.
Is this better?
Yes, it is.
Does everyone hear me okay?
Yeah.
Very good. If that changes, please let me know and we'll readjust to make sure because we have a lot to say this evening, as you would expect. Um, I'm Ed Armstrong. I'm an attorney with the Law Firm of Hillward Henderson. Our offices are at 600 Cleveland Street, Suite 800 in Clearwater. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Morgan Group. Uh, the Morgan Group is a multifamily developer exclusively. Uh, they have built over 20,000 units throughout the United States, approximating, uh, over $2 billion in value. They certainly have the, uh, expertise, talent and the financial resources to make this project a reality. As your staff noted, there are three applications you're voting on tonight. In terms of our presentation of, of evidence, uh, kind of building on what Renee did in her presentation, we would intend to address all three applications with one substantive presentation, if that's acceptable to the commission.
Yes.
Thank you. We have a lot to say. We also have a number of folks here tonight that have worked extensively on the project. They have a lot to say as well. By the end of the evening, I think we'll be able to be responsive to all of your questions because we put a lot of thought into this over a long period of time. That said, before we get into our substantive presentation, there is one issue I would like to address. And that is the fact that there was an email sent to you all about 1:00 today. And it was sent from the Turn the Tide for Tarpon Group suggesting that tonight's presentation be tabled. It was very much opposed to the notion of tabling the issues before you tonight. There's a long history in this project of very public presentations, engagements, hearings. I have no idea why at 1:00 today, the group decides they want to become engaged. Uh, just for, um, for context, we filed our application on August 20th. We had a TRC meeting on September 3rd. We had a second TRC meeting on October 2nd. We had a very well-attended neighborhood meeting on October 13th. We went to the Planning Commission on November 16th. Not a word. So, um, we have all of our experts here tonight. Many of them have traveled here from out of town to present and to respond to any questions coming from this commission. And we very respectfully believe that, you know, we're entitled to a decision tonight. We will, I, we will carry our burden, but at no point was there any hidden ball about this project. And for the, the email out of left field, uh, it would just be unfair in our view to table this matter. So, one last housekeeping matter before I'm going to turn it over to Cindy Terapany, who will address all the land use issues presented this evening. And that has to do with the 1.84 acres that is proposed to be dedicated and hopefully accepted and for which we're asking accepted, and for which we're asking for open space impact fee credits. We have discussed this conceptually with your staff, and they were well aware of this request. What we had not yet had time to have, reach any kind of closure on was evaluation methodology. Our, I think our collective thinking, and Renee can correct me if I mistake this, was that when we got to final development plan, we would have a discussion around valuation if it was, you know, assuming it was a pertinent discussion to have. What we were hoping for tonight is getting a reaction from the commission about the concept of accepting the donation of that land and the concept of giving an appropriate credit for the open space that we'd be providing. And it's certainly up to the commission in terms of how you approach that. We will be back in a week, which gives us another opportunity to discuss it further, depending upon where we go tonight, if that's the pleasure of the commission. So I don't want to wag the dog, there's a whole lot of other issues we need to unpack, as I think Ms. Vincent said early. So we're going to start unpacking right now. I'm going to ask Ms. Terrapini come forward, explain to you her background as a professional land use planner, and ask her to present the case from a land use planning standpoint. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Cindy Terrapini with Terrapini Planning Strategies, and I'm delighted to be here, especially delighted to be here in person with you tonight to hear about this great project. With, along with Mr. Armstrong and the rest of the consultant team, I represent the applicant, the Morgan Group. You're going to hear from some of our other consultants tonight. We have our environmentalist, we have our site engineer, we have the traffic engineer, and we also have our landscape architect. So if any of those issues or items need to be discussed further, we are happy to do that. First, I want to talk about from the very beginning of the conceptual design of this project, which has been, I've been working with this client for three and a half years. We also submitted a conceptual preliminary, a conceptual plan to the city that was reviewed in June, in addition to the other steps that Mr. Armstrong mentioned. But from the very beginning, we've been mindful of the unique environmental features and nature of the site. These unique environmental features have been the driving force behind the entire design for this project. Additionally, the site design can capitalize on the outdoor amenities, and I'll discuss those in a little more detail. Pretty much know where the site is, I want to point out a few facts. It's one of the largest sites in North County at 72 acres total. It also is obviously adjacent to the Anco, Cloat River and has 1,900 lineal feet of frontage on the Ancoat River. The entire riverfront will be preserved in its natural state, and all the buildings will be clustered way south of the riverfront, so that, at significant distances from the river. This is a colored, a rendered site plan, and I want to talk about that, this in a little more detail, so I think it, some of the features of the site pop out a little better on this site plan. First of all, the buildings are concentrated in the center of the site. So there's the clubhouse in this area. There are four buildings fronting along the river, but setback at a significant distances. For example, the closest building is this building number five, which is 175 feet from the riverfront. The other three buildings that are in this section range between 350 and 400 feet from the shoreline. Obviously, the fifth building is not adjacent to the river, but adjacent to this wetland and not adjacent to the river itself. Whole purpose of the design is to cluster those buildings so that we can have those significant setbacks, and we can also have a significant buffer and protection for the eagles. And we'll talk about those in more detail on another slide. The eagle, two eagle nests are generally located in this area. So to give you a little more background on the site, again, here's the main entrance where the clubhouse and pool area are. The wetlands are in the southern portion of the site, they're kind of a U shape that front, circle around these two peninsulas. This is an upland peninsula, and this is a second upland peninsula. Just small area of wetlands also along the riverfront. As was mentioned before, the site is 72 acres. Of the 72 acres, 22 acres are uplands, excuse me, are wetlands. And of those 22 acres of wetlands, we are only impacting less than one acre. That's phenomenal for a site of this size. I've been working as a planner for over 38 years in Pinellas, Pasco, Hernando, various counties around. I have never seen a site of this size impact less than one acre, ever. The impact for those wetlands is for a couple of reasons. They're right in this area around Buildings 2 and 3. They're, they're two small, isolated wetlands. They total 0.9 acres, so you can see how small they are. If they would have to be maintained, it would push, what will happen is it will push the buildings north, which is what we're trying to avoid. Also would prevent development of a small, each building has a garage, a one-story, nine-unit garage for residents. So it would, it would prevent the, the two garages most likely, there's one here for this building, and here's the second garage. It would prevent the ability to have those garages. So in summary, we are preserving 97% or 21 acres of the site's wetlands. Just point out a couple other features on the site. This area you see here in blue is the stormwater management area, and again, here is the eagle's nest. So from the building to the stormwater to the eagle's nest, and then the river, again, the minimum distance is 175 feet. The other distances range between 350 and 400 feet. I'd like to talk about access for a little bit and try and answer some of those questions that you had. We only, we are proposing the one access from US 19. Mr. Hatton will discuss in a little more detail, but we are proposing to have a right, a new right turn lane that will be constructed by the applicant on 19. So as residents are coming home, they will, they're, as they're traveling north, they would enter this right turn lane, turn into the project, and residents will then go into the center section where their key card or remote would activate the gate for them to enter and then proceed into their unit. If they're, if you're a guest coming to the project, again, traveling north, you would go into the right turn lane, come into the entrance of the project, you'll go to the right lane here where there is a, will be a call box. You'll call the resident that you would like to visit, and then they would activate the gate from their apartment to allow you in to the gate here. If for some reason the person you intended to visit wasn't home, for some reason, there is, that's what this, these circles are showing, that this visitor can then make that U-turn and come back out and then exit development. Potential tenants who are coming to the clubhouse, which will have the rental, the rental office will then come in here, make an immediate left, and this is a circle and parking around the clubhouse area. For exiting the development, again, there will be the turn, the lane will take you to 19. Residents that are going north or going into Newport Ritchie or any of those spots would continue north on 19. Those folks that want to turn south will go to the new median opening, again, constructed by the developer, make a U-turn, and then continue back southbound. We all travel US 19 all the time. We know that these U-turns are very common on 19, on 19. Mr. Hatton will discuss in a little more detail why they are the safest option for the project. Want to touch a little bit on the features of the project and the amenities, and we've talked about some of these, so I'll go through them kind of quickly. Again, this is the clubhouse, pool area, will have outdoor seating area, fire pits, grills. At that, that's at the western edge there. Then in the center of these two buildings, between Buildings 2 and 3, again, another outdoor amenity and courtyard area that will also have seating, grills, a fire pit, playground equipment, and a pet park. There are two canoe launches proposed, and I'm going to generally show them, and then we'll talk about them on the next exhibit, too. One of them is due north of Building 5 on the Ancoat River, and the other one is on the southwest peninsula, and I'll show you that on the next slide. The applicant also proposes electric car charging stations within the development, and they are proposing to build two charging stations, and each station will have the facilities for two cars. So it'll be a total of four. One of them will be located in the parking area by the clubhouse, and the second one somewhere within the development. The applicant is also planning for the future, so that if this is, continues to be a desired use and the residents have a need and a desire for more charging stations, they are going to install conduit within the landscape island so that more charging stations can be added at a future date. Want to talk about this for a little bit. Again, let me just briefly show you the two kayak launches. The first one, again, this, of course, this is the river edge along here, a canoe and kayak launch in this location, and a canoe and kayak launch to the west of this building. And again, this one would go into the wetlands and be able to travel this area. Additionally, for the one along the river, subject to permitting, we are proposing a boat dock, again, subject to all the permitting requirements. What I like to, what is really important about this slide is, is, well, a couple of things. One, the orange that you see is the pedestrian path throughout the entire project. So not only does it connect the clubhouse along the stormwater management area, up to the boat dock and kayak launch, but most importantly, it comes down through this southeast peninsula, which is uplands, and then, and that would be a nature trail along within that southeast peninsula, again, open only to residents. I want to point out especially this six acres and another little section over here on the total six acres is uplands that we are proposing to not develop. And not only are we not developing it through the preliminary plan, but as Ms. Vincent mentioned, we will submit, and we're required as a condition to submit a plan amendment to recreation open space for, again, for this six acres, so that only recreational activities can be built on that part of the property. So the, the project you see before you tonight at 404 units, with the amenities that we are showing and the general locations of the buildings, is the entire development for this site. I'd like to talk for a few minutes about the two eagle nests, and we also have our ecologist here, so if you have any detailed questions that I can't answer, I'd like to, well, we will ask him to speak to you as well. First of all, the applicant is proposing the most strict, strict and stringent conditions for protection of the two eagle's nests that there can be. Again, this is the general location, is the orange circles that you see there. Within the first 100 feet of radius, there are no improvements whatsoever. Within the 330-foot radius, which is this circle, excuse me, is the yellow circle there, the only work that is proposed is a portion of the stormwater pond. You can see that underlined on the site plan. So the only thing that's in that area is a portion of the stormwater pond, no buildings and no parking. Within 660 feet of the eagle nest, again, no buildings, but there is the balance of the stormwater pond and parking area. So again, the applicant is well aware of the permitting requirements for the eagle's nests, which will remain where they are located, and we will comply with all the permitting requirements for the eagle nest, protection of the eagles. At this exhibit, again, the, the two red dots are the approximate location of the eagle nests. Why don't you just point out that the wooded area around the eagles and the retention pond serve as further buffering and protection from the eagles from human activity. Also during construction, the applicant will be guided by an ecologist to ensure that best practices are used during construction so that no harm would come to the eagle's nest. We've been talking about the proposed park, and I want to spend a minute or two talking about that. This is the general location of the park area. It is 1.84 acres, 0.85 of that is uplands. And the idea of it was, really, the idea was for the boating public. As you are traveling along, many of you have been on this section of the river, and we would just give people an opportunity to pull off, meet up with someone else perhaps, and have lunch, stop and have a drink of water, just to take a little respite as you're boating along the river. If the city desires, there is the potential to build, whoops. I don't know what happened. Sorry about that. If the city desires and there's an interest in doing that, there is the ability to extend the sidewalk, a new sidewalk from the existing sidewalk on US 19, and then have that travel up to the city park. This would be available to folks who are coming from the trail, or perhaps from the Ancoat Nature Park, if they wanted to continue further. There will be no parking at this park. We don't intend that to have any parking at that area. And, and there really is only way to, for it to be accessed outside of the boat, which is the primary reason, we people walking or biking from, you know, along US 19, perhaps from the trail. I'd like to talk for just a minute about the couple of waivers that we are requesting that Ms. Vincent didn't mention them, but I want to spend a couple of minutes about it. The RPD District, the Residential Plan Development District, is really a customized zoning district that, that the applicant and the city work on together and develop a site plan together. And we have been doing that with your staff, and we hope to finish that with you tonight. That RPD District is basically a what you see is what you get. You are approving, if you do approve it, you are approving a specific site plan, you're approving the specific uses, you're approving the setbacks, the parking, all of those dimensional requirements you are approving if you do approve the project. Deviations from that can only be made if they are fairly minor. If they are major, the entire project goes back through the whole public hearing process. And as part of that RPD, the RPD District gives, grants the city council the ability to grant waivers, provided there's a justification for it, and those four justifications are set out in the code. One of the, the justifications have to be based on one or more of these factors. A superior alternative, a protection of significant features, a reasonable use, or technically impractical. I'd like to show you why both of our waivers meet these criteria. The first one, I think, is pretty straightforward, and maybe we can go back to that. So the first waiver is a request to increase the height from the 45 feet in the zoning district to 53. So we're asking for an eight-foot increase in height. What that eight-foot increase in height allows us to do is have fewer buildings, fewer impact on the land, it allows us to have these large setbacks from the river and from the eagle nest and provide all that protection. The residential buildings located in the center of the site, I meet two of the waiver criteria. It's a superior alternative because there are fewer buildings and a smaller total project footprint. And then secondly, it protects significant features, which I think are pretty obvious. It protects the wetlands, it protects the riverfront, and it protects the eagle's nest. The second waiver is to allow only one entrance to the site on US 19. Some of that conversation has happened earlier tonight, and I'd like to emphasize that as well. The only other place where we have any right-of-way is right here at this edge of the property. And that is a, it's called Hayes Road on the property appraiser. It's only 40 feet wide. It can, does continue to Jasmine, but only as 40 feet wide. So first of all, first problem is, it's only 40 feet wide. Your minimum code is 50 feet. And we don't own the property along there that you would need for the additional 10 feet to make a minimum 50 feet. So you'd be in the position of having to condemn property from mult, from the owners all along that section of road over to Jasmine. But more importantly to us, it seemed inappropriate to us to add this multifamily traffic to Jasmine to a single-family neighborhood of Sale Harbor. So for those reasons, we are asking to only have the one entrance on US 19. And Mr. Hatton can speak to it also, but I think it's really obvious on this exhibit, this is our entire frontage on US 19. This is the piece of city owns, a little triangle of city owns. So the, really, we would not have enough space to have two driveways on US 19, and we'd think the driveway to the east or the right-of-way to the east is just totally inappropriate to be used as an access. The second waiver meets, also meets two of the waiver criteria. It's a superior alternative in that it avoids that traffic impact on the single-family Sale Harbor neighborhood. And technically, secondly, it's technically impractical. There is only 40 feet. We don't own the land adjacent to it, so we cannot participate by donating that right-of-way. So you would have to condemn that right-of-way from several of the property owners along that section all the way to Jasmine. So we believe both of these waivers are justified. Be happy to answer more questions about that. I'd like to spend just a few minutes talking about how the project complies with the review criteria in your code. The project has been reviewed in detail by your staff and your consultants in two TRC meetings and found to be in compliance with all the city codes. The Planning Commission also reviewed the project and also recommended approval based on the compliance with the codes and the best alternative for the site. The current zoning is general business, and there is a wide variety of commercial uses that could be allowed on the general business zoning district. As many of you know, this site was approved 15 years ago for a big-box retailer, office, and a gas station. We believe this proposed use of residential has substantially less impacts in all of the important areas. Clearly substantially less environmental impact, clearly less traffic impact, clearly a better result for the community, because these new residents will be participating in the community rather than being a big-box retailer that doesn't participate in that community life. The proposed multifamily residential use is allowed in both of the site's plan categories, the commercial general and the residential office. And as Ms. McNe stated, we are way under the density, the maximum density that would be allowed, and we are preventing any future development by the recreation open space plan category. The project protects the environmental features of the site, including preservation of 97% of the wetlands. The project protects the environmental features of the site, including preservation of 97% of the wetlands on the site, protection of large, of protection of the eagle's nest to this most stringent degree, and significant setbacks from the Anclot River. The residential project is compatible with its surroundings. It's, it's rather isolated except for this, this eastern edge. And it's rather isolated by the river, by 19 and wetlands along the edge. But this area of US-19 is primarily residential in nature and this project is obviously a residential project. The project proposes a new multifamily residential use to promote that residential diversity in the city. And these new residences will, residents will patronize the city's businesses, both in the downtown and the sponge stocks and throughout the city. The project is designed as a livable community. It's designed for people to live, work, and play there. And we've made it easy for them to do that through having these wonderful residential recreational amenities, having the pedestrian trail throughout the site, and then a recreational activity area. Again, the, the trail that goes through the nature park along here. Significant upland habitat is preserved on-site to a high degree. We are preserving 40% of that significant habitat or almost 12 acres. The project exceeds the two open space requirements and provides an extraordinary amount of active and passive open space for the residents. I think one of the, one of the numbers that's the most telling to me is on a 72-acre site, we are, we only have about 12 acres of impervious. Impervious areas that, that is occupied by building or parking. So on 72 acres, we have 12 acres of impervious building and parking. That's a phenomenally low impervious surface ratio. We do plan to improve the site by several methods. It will be our obligation at our cost to design, permit, and build this right turn lane along the US-19 into the site. It will also be our obligation to design, permit, and build the turn, the, the median opening for turning if you're going north to make that southbound turn. If you're coming to the site from the north, there'll be a U-turn movement here for then to turn back into the site. Again, design, permitting, and construction all required by the applicant. We propose a transportation management plan to encourage that non-vehicular modes of traffic. We've reduced the density to below the 15, to significantly below the 15 units per acre maximum. The pedestrian-oriented circulation system that we've just talked about, the variety of onsite recreation facilities to keep people onsite to some degree. Everybody's eventually going to go to the beach or go boating, but there's a huge amount of recreational activities proposed on the site. We have electric car charger stations on the site and an onsite working center to encourage and enable people working from home. Will be the developer's obligation to extend the sewer line from its existing location to serve the site. And all other public services are available, including water, solid waste, police, fire, and stormwater management. And then finally, we propose to donate the city park and I'm sure we'll have a little more conversation about that, but we do propose that as a proposal. It's not a requirement in the code. We are providing for recreational activities within our project, our property as neighborhood park activities, as to quite a degree, as you could have seen. But we thought it would be nice to offer something else to the citizens of the city. The value of the RPD District, again, is that a specific site plan, if approved, is, that is the approved plan and all development must be consistent with that. Additionally, we have to come back to you as the city board of commissioners with a final development plan showing that our final plan is consistent with the preliminary plan we're showing you tonight. We have reviewed and we are in agreement with all the conditions that are proposed in the staff report with one small footnote, Mr. Armstrong alluded to this and as did Ms. Vincent. Condition number 14 deals with the donation of the park and the related improvements. We absolutely are proposing to donate that park to you. We do ask for, for your understanding and for your appreciation with the impact fee credits. For whatever limited amount of improvements you might want to make, which we had suggested that it's a very passive park with very limited improvements, that we would make, we would like to make a financial contribution to the city earmarked for that. And we're happy to discuss that in more detail. I'd now like to introduce Christopher Hatton, who's the project's traffic engineer. Let him explain some of the traffic issues that you've been asking about. And then when he's completed, well, our team will be happy to answer any and all of your questions.
Hang on a second. We're going to go ahead and have them ask questions now of you, Ms. Tera Pani? And just so that we don't have the up and downs, back and forth. So are there any questions from the commission to Ms. Tera Pani on the presentation that she's made so far?
I've got a, a couple that I could ask.
Mr. Vice Mayor Carr?
Okay. There's discussion of two waivers in the backup on page 209. It talks about a, a third waiver for parking. You didn't necessarily talk about parking in the depth and the details, but it talks about required spaces of being 807, but there's going to be 706, 761 spaces proposed. With that, the, the waiver is being requested, I think, for the pool area of reduction of parking spots. That wasn't discussed at all in your presentation nor staff's presentation. Is there any additional comment that could be made on that?
Sure, I'd be happy to explain that. You must, for some, possibly you might have an old version. We thought originally that we might need a parking waiver. We do not. We are not asking for a parking waiver and let me just walk you through it. The requirement for parking is 1.75 spaces per unit. In addition, there is parking required, one space for every 250 square feet of the clubhouse and one space for every 50 square feet of the community pool. We are eligible for, as your code allows, a 10% reduction in the total parking because of our proximity to the Pinellas Trail. So the total parking requirement is 726 spaces for this project. We are proposing 761 spaces for the project. So we do not, we do not need a parking waiver.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Appreciate that. You mentioned some along the lines of EV parking spaces for charging stations. Was that a total of four spots?
We, we are proposing two stations. Each station will have two charging stations, so a total of four charging stations. And again, we are planning for the future and laying that conduit now when the development is done so that it, as needed, depending on the residents and the demands, that's what a, a, a good apartment developer can do. Sees that increased demand and increased request for that facility and that amenity, and he has the ability to do that.
Is there any idea of how much conduit will be laid or is that just kind of a?
I'm not sure. I can, I can ask the developer. I know they have thought through this, that they wanted to put that in so that they had the ability in the future to be able to, to improve or increase the amount of charging stations if needed.
Sure, yeah. Since it's a deliberate intention by the developer, I think it'd be something worth asking for the next time that comes around.
Okay.
See. Was there, do you know if there's going to be any like certifications from a green building standards at all for this development?
Typically, the Morgan Group does do some levels of LEED in, I think you're speaking of the LEED program in their project. For those of you that are familiar with LEED, which you may well be, the LEED certificate, there's various levels of LEED certification, starting with, I think, a bronze, a silver, and a gold. And the higher up you go, the more improvements you make towards the LEED goals and, and process. The problem with determining the exactly whether LEED will be pursued and what level at this point is that so many of the LEED factors that you can do are specifically related to building construction, types of building materials. There's many site issues as well, but many of them are also building construction related. And so at this point, we are going to continue to look at that. The Morgan Group is definitely going to continue to look at that, but just is not prepared at this point to be able to say absolutely, you know, we are going to, to do that until they finish their construction design and have all the details completed on construction.
Okay. So it's something the Morgan Group's familiar with and has done in the past with other buildings?
Yes, sir, they have.
Yeah, I think that's an important aspect of this property here to have some type of intention to that and being part of Harp and Springs overall, so. Let me just, there's going to be obviously different questions for other individuals, part of your group. So thank you again for your presentation. I just want to make sure I'm not missing anything here. One of the questions is a sidewalk that leads to the Pinellas Trail from the apartment complex. Do you know the width of that offhand?
I don't, but I can, I can check that with one of our team.
Okay.
It, it does exist. As you probably know, it goes basically from project entrance all the way down to, you know, where the bridge is. And then under the bridge is where you connect west to go onto the trail. Or actually, you can go east on the trail as well.
Okay, yeah, I just want to bring that up as a, obviously, it's not going to be a, a trail, it's a sidewalk. But I think the encouraging thing is you're going to have residents in the 404 units that have access to the Pinellas Trail. So to making sure that they have a wide enough sidewalk is important, I think, in the design aspect of it. I mean, something that's six feet, I think, would be fair to look at. So I mean, if that's just something we could check on as well in that area. And then I, I believe there were some discussions about the, the land being donated to the city as well. I'm not, I don't like this idea at all, but I appreciate the, the gesture and the, the idea being brought forward. If I just want to confirm, any land that's not being built on is going to be either put in recreation or preservation? Did I understand that correctly?
Yes, yes. So there's two areas that will not be built on. One is the wetlands and the wetlands will be, they have a preservation category now, but that preservation category will be adjusted to reflect the exact wetland line because we do have now a wetland line approved by Swiftman. So the, the wetlands in, in this area will be all designated preservation. And then the second area that you were speaking of is this southeast peninsula. Here, and a little section of the land that doesn't show very clearly on this exhibit. They total six acres. They are uplands. And that is the area that would be proposed to be designated as recreation open space in the future land use map.
Okay. And so the area that, that's being proposed as a swap for credits, I suppose, what would that be considered then? If the city says no to it, what is that considered from a zoning standpoint? Do you know?
Well, the, the upland portion will, will stay commercial general because it's on the west, it's in this west section of the property. So it's, there's, you know, about 0.8 acres of uplands that will remain commercial general plan category and will be zoned RPD. And then the up, the wetland section of that park or submerged land, either one, will remain as either upland or submerged land.
Okay. Or the commission could also make the recommendation that it follows suit with the rest of the, the property?
Well, the rest, there is no plan amendment proposed for the rest of the property. The only plan amendment area is this recreation open space area, so.
But it could match that, right?
Well, there's really no need to, to match it because if, if you decide not to, if you just say you do not want to accept the donation, then we'll take this off the master, the preliminary plan before second reading. And it'll be shown as open space.
Okay. Yeah, I think it makes sense from a commission standpoint to look at it from a preservation and recreation space outside of the city. The public art funds, wasn't it discussed? And this was just going to fall in your purview? Would that be under somebody else, Mr. Pani?
No, I can answer. The applicant is well aware of the public art requirements. Typically, Morgan Group on their projects, even other projects that do not have public art requirements, they have generally done public art on-site. They still are in the, the final design phase, so they're not ready to say absolutely they will do a project on-site. But that's the most likely possibility. If, if they do not are able to do a, a public art project on-site, then they will pay the public art fee that's required.
Okay. There's one other thing that was interesting to me and I didn't, I don't understand this in detail, but as part of the email that Mr. Armstrong brought up earlier, and it talks about the, I think, potential sea level rise in 2040 and 2055 and so on. Has the applicant evaluated that at all or looked at that from a standpoint of potential rising tides in the future? Concerns of flooding or anything like that?
Yes, we have looked at it. And when I, I, I guess according to Mr. Chast's direction, I'm happy to finish my questions. We do have Artie Centron here, who is the project engineer, licensed registered professional engineer in Florida. I'd like him to address that issue specifically.
Okay.
We don't think there's a concern about it, but he's happy to answer the question.
That's fair. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have any further questions.
Mr. Donovan?
Yeah, thank you. Could you real quick just identify the other experts that are going to speak, just so I don't waste, you know, any questions?
Sure. Christopher Hatton is a traffic engineer. Artie Centron over here and Nathan Lee are the project engineers for the civil side. John Miklos is the ecologist. Any questions about wetlands mitigation, the eagles, Mr. Miklos can handle. Wes Rogers is the landscape architect. And our client, Camille Salome, is the Morgan Development Group applicant.
Okay. And are they all going to speak?
As you have questions, no, they, we're not planning to, for each of them to make a presentation, but if you have specific questions.
Okay.
We can certainly answer your questions.
So piggybacking off of, I think, the point that Vice Mayor Carr was getting at. So what, what are, what are the plans for the, the land donation or, it's more a land trade, right? I mean, a, a land donation is, hey, you get this and there's no expect of anything in return. But you're saying, hey, you get this 1.8 acres and you take off the credits. So for the land trade, I guess, what, what are the plans for that actual land if, if we say no to the trade?
If you say no to the trade, we don't plan any development in that area. It will remain as open space. And the wetlands and submerged lands will remain as wetlands and submerged land.
Yeah, this, Armstrong, again, I, I think that's the case. And part of the challenge is, I don't know yet, I mean this in the most respectful way, that that's a consensus of the commission to not accept it. It may, we may end up there, but I don't know that we're there yet. And it's hard for us to answer hypothetical questions. So it's a little bit of a challenge until we determine what the interest level is of the commission collectively on accepting the land.
Okay, so if we.
Have to take that into account, please.
So, okay, I, I understand. But so if, if we did not, then it may not necessarily be left as open space?
I can tell you honestly, we really haven't thought about it. And it's not because we're not thoughtful people. And we have spent hundreds of hours on this project, but there was a, a lot of discussion. And the impression that we received was that the city did seem to be interested in, at a minimum, accepting it as city property, as an amenity for kayakers and other river-goers. And it was, I don't think contemplated by any of us, that in accepting it. We can certainly regroup quickly, if that's the consensus of the commission, and adapt and, you know, respond to, to your questions more specifically. But it's nothing, honestly, we never thought about it.
Okay, I appreciate that. Next, would you mind going back to the gate entrance slide?
Is that the slide, Mr. Commissioner?
Yeah, that one. Could you just explain a little bit better? So if I'm a guest, I'm going to go to the, I guess, what would that be, the southernmost lane?
Right. If you're a guest, you're going to come to this lane, far, the far-right lane. As you're coming in, it'll be the far-right lane. On the little red circle there will be a, a kiosk call, call area where you will call the resident that you would like to visit. They will then, from their apartment, that resident can open the gate and allow you in. Now, generally speaking, if you know you're going to visit someone, you're going to make sure they're there before you go. So that you'll call them, they will open the gate from their apartment, you'll enter and go to, to visit them. If for some reason they're not there, then you will, this car, again, you're in this far-right lane. You'll make this turn and then exit the property.
So are you driving right in front of, say, like a resident pulls up to do their key card at the same time? That's just my concern is that if the residents are going to be in that middle portion, I swap my key card to go in that gate and then I start moving forward to go inside the community. And then a guest is also turning around at the same time and hits my car. Do you get what I'm saying?
I, I see what you're saying, but for, keep in mind too that, that cars are going at very slow speed right here. So there is space and of course they should be able to easily see each other. There's not any visibility problems with seeing the two cars. So obviously, whoever is there first will make the movement and whoever is there second will yield to, you know, the person that's moving first.
Okay. That's just, I mean, that's kind of concerning to me just, but I, I know it's, it's more of a minor detail, but common sense does not always prevail on the road, so. That's all the questions I have for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Vaticios?
Thank you. Good evening, Ms. Tera Pani. The, the timeframe for breaking ground, with, with, from a project perspective, what, what are we looking at?
Well, we still have several processes to go through before we do that, just to be specific. We need to come back, we need to develop construction plans for the entire project. We need to develop construction plans for the new sewer line. Have that approved by the city staff and then come to you as the board of commissioners and receive approval. Then we would submit construction plans to the city. We most likely will submit it in two phases. One for the site work and then come back in for the buildings themselves. We wouldn't expect to break ground probably until the last quarter of 2020. Uh, we wouldn't expect to break ground, um, probably until the last quarter of 2021.
Okay, that's good.
Thank you.
The driveway cut, I asked Ms. Vincent about the driveway cut in, in the main entrance, whether that's been approved by DOT. I guess the answer is probably not, since the DOT permit hasn't been issued yet or reviewed.
You're correct in that we do not have a DOT permit. However, uh, Mr. Hatton can explain. They've had several meetings with DOT and discussed within the location that driveway, discussed within the permitting requirements, and also discussed the two offset medians. And they, FDOT has submitted a conceptual letter, conceptually approving all of those factors that I just talked about.
Okay.
All, of course, subject to permitting.
Right. No, that's fine. And the, um, the, um... The, that right-hand turn lane, it's similar to an acceleration lane, I get, I take it?
It would be, it, it's, I guess it'd be more technically called a deceleration lane, because you're on 19, moving north, or you're de-selling, de-accelerating to turn into the project. Yes, sir.
And the, uh, status of the permitting, notwithstanding DOT, SWIFTMUD permits, have, have they been, uh, applied for yet, or is this still in design?
The stormwater design is still in design. This, the storm, the, excuse me, the wetland jurisdictional line has been approved by SWIFTMUD, so that part is complete.
The one vehicular access point, I, I mean, I understand, it's just too bad that, that, um, you know, we can't have that second access. I understand going through the neighborhoods is, is not an easy thing, but, uh, given that this is, uh, private development, it's gonna be up to the management, the owners, to discern, you know, determine how that's all gonna work out. The, um... I, I've got, do have some questions on, on the, um, on the grading, um, for the, uh, for the, uh, engineer, but I'd like to talk about that 1.85 acre parcel for just a minute, and I have some questions in that regard. I think the idea, and I didn't have a chance to, um, explain this, and this is gonna be in the form of questions. The idea that would, that would be for a kayak, uh, landing, a, a passive location, the, uh, the point, point, 0.85 acre, uh, upland, um, is, is probably not gonna be useful for anything else the way it's shaped right now, just because of the, uh, um, the buffer area. It's probably not even 50 feet from the, uh, mean high water line to the, uh, to the property, that would define that 1.85 acres. But it, you know, the city is, does have the kayak launch at the Splash Park. It's got another landing at Anclot Nature Park, and this would make a third one. We also have a, uh, a deficiency within the comprehensive plan for, um, mini parks, which this would, 1.85 acres would contribute to reducing that deficiency. I do have, um, a reason for not agreeing to...
Mr., we need to have questions, not the narrative.
The, the, the impact fees, and these will be in the form of questions. The impact fees, um, that, that, um, I was talking about would be using for something else. Would the applicant be amenable to, um, can, not contribute, but participate in perhaps using their, um, your, the developers, professionals, the architects, engineers, so forth, to help develop that city, uh, parcel into a parking lot in the form of a trailhead? Would, would that be possible as part of this project?
Commissioner Radikis, if I can confirm, are you talking about the, the city park, the city parcel that's at the entrance, this blue area?
Right. It, it's city-owned, but there's a reason for asking that. Um, it, it's very similar to everything else. It, it is there, it's in the middle of your project. I would think that the developer would be interested in whatever the city does to kind of try and make it fit with the overall project as well. And, um, and that would be something that could, we could discuss as far as impact fee credits for that type of activity. The sidewalk that would be connected, uh, from the trail, um, forward, and then those small sections that the development would provide as infill from the trail all the way to this parcel, the 1.85 acres, was that gonna be, um, credits on that? Or was that something that the developer was gonna do as part of the code requirement?
Uh, I think you're asking about, um, because at this, at certain point, the sidewalk on 19 starts to...
Right. There's some infill sidewalks that you showed as part of the amenities, uh...
Right. So, it would, it would peel off from the existing sidewalk. Uh, we had said that if, if the city was interested and wanted us to do that, that we would, we would consider doing that, provided we can do it in the existing right-of-way. I don't know that we had really thought about impact fee credits for that, to tell you the truth.
Mr. Armstrong, let's just wait for, um, your rebuttal or cross-exa, uh, cross-examination. So, you have any other questions of, uh, Ms. Terepani before, um, we move on to the next witness?
I, I do have a number of questions, but I mean, it, it's like, I need to ask the questions to find out whether the applicant's gonna be amenable to them. They're, they're related to the project, but they're also related to other things as well, but they are related to the project.
I understand. The issue is, is I got Mr. Armstrong stepping up and down, and I wanna make sure if you have questions of Ms. Terepani, that we get those questions asked, instead of Mr. Armstrong responding to your questions. And so, just the process, I just wanna make sure that we're clear.
Thank you. Can you write my questions down, Mr. Armstrong, and call him?
And I understood your question.
I, I do have other questions from Ms. Terepani.
I understood your question be more directed towards the developer, because you're asking whether or not they'd be willing to make this commitment. I was going to suggest that, allow me to confer with the developer and get back to you later in this meeting, is that's acceptable? As a way of resolving the issue, I was sort of not trying to step on this Terepani's dialogue with you in terms of questions.
Okay. Already. Well, just a question for the city attorney. When do we ask those questions? If these are things that, that the...
We need to finish with this witness. We'll go to the next one, and we'll keep going through the witnesses. And if your questions are not answered by those witnesses, ultimately, Mr. Armstrong will have the...
So, I'll just ask him, and then Ms. Terepani can defer, or...
If she doesn't know the answer, she'll tell you, I don't know the answer, and we'll let this other person testify. That's just, it's just a process. We need to make sure that the witnesses, so we don't have up and down, up and down, every single time. Okay?
Right. I understand.
Thank you.
Is that land that's part of that 1.85 acres, is that a, the submerged lands, is that owned through a TIF? Or is that not, uh, part of a TIF deed?
I'm not sure the answer. I have, I'd have to look at the, uh, survey, which I have with me. I'm not sure the answer to that question.
So, we don't know that one? Okay. You answered the questions concerned, or at least we're getting there for the sidewalks. The, um, did you, did, did your project have an opportunity to discuss a reclaimed water line as part of that extension of the force main from the, the project site to the treatment plant?
In attendance at all of the, both the TRC meetings and the conceptual plan review that we did back in June, and I don't ever remember a conversation where the city suggested that we extend a reclaimed line. And I honestly am not sure if it's because lack of water supply. Clearly, there is no reclaimed line in this area. I'm not sure how far away it is. It's something I think, I don't, perhaps Mr. Centron might know. If he does, um, we could ask him. Might be something we need to have to come back to you upon second reading.
We, we are gonna be providing sewer from 440 unit, 400, treating sewer from 404 units. We might need to put that water somewhere other than in the Anclot River. Um, I guess is what I'm getting at. The, um, okay. Mr. Trask?
Yes.
This, the, the notion of whether the city accepts the, the parcel or not, that's gonna be decided by the commission during the discussion period?
Yes, that's correct. Yes.
Lay out my ideas at that time?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I, I, I think that's, uh, hang on a second. Yeah, I just wanted to compliment the, uh, developer on the nice package of amenities for the, uh, residents that are gonna be sitting there. I was, I was very impressed with that. Uh, that's all the questions I have.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Terepani, do you have any questions?
No.
Mayor, do you have questions?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Ms. Terepani?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for, uh, the presentation. Couple of things that I, I would like to ask. Earlier, I mentioned that, uh, the design of the buildings, you should have something to represent our culture. Is anything that you can look into that? Or is it premature?
I, I, I can ask the developer about that offline, you know, be, uh, the meeting. But remember that the developer has a vision of his project and, and a corporate vision for the project. So, that's gonna be part and parcel of his project, is how he does, he considers that design.
Okay. Uh, do we know how many new trees are going to be planted in that development? I know a lot of them are going to be removed.
I do not know that offhand. I can ask the landscape architect, um, that question.
Okay.
Or we can ask him that.
Uh, I was, uh, earlier had asked a question about, uh, the cars have to cross three lanes to turn around. Are you gonna have the, um, traffic engineer to explain that to us later?
Yes, sir. As soon as, as I understand the process, when y'all have asked my questions, Mr. Hatton will come up, and he has a detailed presentation on the traffic issues, and some slides to explain that as well.
And my last question to, uh, to you, uh, the, the property that we call a donation for park, which is excellent exchange for, for credits, do we know what's worth? What the value of the property is, and how many, uh, credits we expecting to give?
Um, no, sir, we don't know. The short answer is, we do not know the value of that. We have had some preliminary discussions with the staff about how to value that. Should it be an appraisal? You know, what, what, what's the appropriate method? So, no, we don't know the answer to that yet. Thought it was preliminary, too preliminary to have that conversation, unless you all were interested in accepting the park. If you are, um, then we would proceed with discussing with the staff the correct methodology to establish that value, and then that decision would still come back to you to make a decision on that.
I'm sure that'll be one of the, uh, things we're gonna be discussing among the commissioners, so...
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Trask, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Armstrong. You have, you have additional questions, Commissioner? Okay, I'm sorry. Ms. Terepani, you have one more question?
Well, is Mr. Armstrong gonna get up, and I can ask him questions?
He, he's gonna make his next, bring his next witness up. So, we're gonna go through all the witnesses first, and then he can summarize. He's not testifying tonight.
Well, let me ask Ms. Terepani then. Is it a hard requirement that there's, would the, the, uh, 1.85 acre, is that a hard requirement that it would not be given gratis to the city?
I think that's something I can't answer. I think that's something we need to speak to our...
That would be for Mr. Armstrong, too.
To Mr. Armstrong, and speak to our client about that.
Okay. That's one question I am gonna have at some point this evening to get answered. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Armstrong, your next witness?
Thank you. We certainly anticipate there'd be a robust discussion this evening about traffic circulation, traffic patterns, how the site functions, uh, from a traffic standpoint. So, to that end, uh, we have brought forward, um, uh, Christopher Hatton with the Kinley Horn Firm, and he's gonna first explain to you his professional credentials. Then he has a presentation for you to explain the thought and analysis that went into the proposal as it pertains to traffic patterns. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Christopher Hatton. I am a registered professional traffic engineer with the firm of Kinley Horn. As Ed mentioned, I am the traffic expert for the project. I have transfer, I have provided transportation studies for the past 29 years in the Tampa Bay area. I had a master's, uh, in, uh, transportation from the Georgia Institute of Technology. So, I wanted to do a brief, uh, presentation, and I think some of the questions that I received or heard earlier, uh, this evening, we can address in those, and certainly afterwards, I'll be able to answer some of those. I wanted to start with a, an overview, just in terms of the transportation services that we conducted, and some of the ones specifically that we did not only with the city, but also with the DOT. Uh, we had several meetings with the city and city staff, including the transportation consultant that was hired by the city. Uh, we did a traffic operational analysis that is required, uh, by the city, a tier-one analysis, and went through, again, about three iterations, which the questions, comments were asked, and then we provided responses, additional analysis. It's taken several months. Uh, in addition, back in 2019, we actually started, uh, part of this process when we met with the DOT. We met with the DOT to talk about access, uh, on US-19. This gives a little overview, and I do have some additional slides here. But one of the things that I think is most, uh, important here, is when we brought up this, we were looking at an access point, which we are right now for, uh, for our location here, realizing ultimately, based upon the access class of US-19, which is an access class three, which requires 660 foot spacing, that we were gonna basically have one access. We looked at it, we discussed it with them. Basically, it was first a recommendation, and ultimately, then a mandate by the DOT that to enhance safety. Instead of having a normal, full median opening at this location, that we were to be required by the DOT. Now, this, this is not our discussion. This is basically our, not our decision, but actually the decision by the FDOT that they wanted to provide, and what we say, see here, is we call these an offset left-turn median opening. And what this left-turn off, excuse me, this offset left-turn median opening does, provides, it basically puts the conflicts away from the main project driveway. And on a high-speed roadway such as 19, that is ultimately what the most important thing is. Now, I'm sure, as you know, over the last five to 10 years, the FDOT has moved its mindset from just moving freight and vehicles through roads. They have now focused much more importantly on safety and mobility. I'm sure you've heard many times the terms of complete streets, but also vision zero, which is basically to try to do away with all fatalities on roadways. So, the focus here, and the focus on DOT, and they've done considerable amount of traffic studies as it relates to different alternative access, um, uh, opportunities for driveways. Specifically, this one, the offset, uh, left-turn median opening, is one that they highly favor now, and are trying to implement in different areas around. And again, this is specifically District 7 for the FDOT. Again, I wanna go through just a couple of slides here to go into a little bit more detail into exactly what we're proposing. As Ms. Terepani mentioned, we are actually going to be constructing a deceleration lane into the site at our right-in, right-out. And also, as, uh, Ms. Terepani mentioned, we actually do have an additional study that we will be doing for the FDOT specifically. The study that we've done, and we have submitted and gone through several iterations with the city and consultant, was done, again, for the last three-plus months. We are now have, gonna have to do a specific individual study for the Florida Department of Transportation that looks specifically on things like deceleration distances and the details for the offset left-turn median openings. Now, what we're gonna be doing is part, 'cause I know one of the questions that we got earlier was specifically, what is that FDOT study gonna do? And that's basically, based upon the, uh, the amount of traffic that's coming into and out of this site, is going to determine the length of this deceleration lane that's gonna be ultimately this northbound to southbound U-turn for folks that will be exiting, and then ultimately going into this turn lane, as well as the southbound to northbound, and then crossing going in. And we do have a couple of slides a little bit later, uh, Mr. Mayor, to address some of your concern in terms of the, uh, crossing of the three lanes.
Okay.
Just a couple of slides here to kind of just get an overall, uh, understanding in terms of the traffic that's out on US-19, and also the traffic that we're proposing. Now, obviously, this site has been proposed for much larger volumes in terms of traffic and the like, but specifically, as it relates to what we're proposing, the 404 apartments, the amount of traffic that we have, this is the northbound, uh, traffic on US-19. This is the southbound traffic on US-19. And here's our anticipated project traffic that we have for both. And right there, that's less than 3% of that traffic. Normally, for a traffic study to be quote-unquote significant on a project, uh, roadway, you have to be at 5% to basically impact it. Again, we're less than 3%. Now, of course, the requirements for the city, just because we're tier-one, and we actually had access, we had to do the study. We're very, uh, happy to do that as well. And this was something that, uh, was, again, looking at the site with what ultimately could also be put on the site, and what we call this is a comparable site analysis. That's looking at other potential uses, uh, that could be on, uh, the site. This is dealing with a shopping center. center over 450,000 up to 460,000 square feet, an office building at 347,000 square feet. And this identifies the trip generation that could be expected from those type of developments. Again, significantly more than what we're proposing for our 404 apartments, from 100 to 500% greater from what we ultimately will generate. And one of the things that we wanted to address specifically, and we were actually, again, when we, we went in 2019 with the FDOT and met with them, and they recommended, then ultimately required the offset left turn median openings, when we met with them again in October of this year, they again assured us, not only, because again, that's something that they're trying to do to enhance safety, which is not always convenient. Obviously, if you have a full median opening right at your driveway, it's certainly more convenient, but it's not more as it relates to the safety issue. So they basically were talking to us specifically about that. Now, one of the things that we wanted to do, because we knew it would be an issue here, certainly, I'm very, very aware of work, I've done several studies that have impacted in and around US-19, is obviously the large volumes there. So what the important things are, and specifically, again, Mr. Mayor, you've mentioned, you know, the ability and basically just take this as US-19, for a vehicle to basically exit, turn right, cross three lanes of traffic, and then to get into that U-turn, was evaluated based upon the time that would be needed for a vehicle to leave the driveway, cross the three lanes of traffic, and to get into that would be approximately five seconds. One, two, three, four, five. And by that time, they will be able to made it across US-19 to get into that. So what we evaluated for both the AM peak and the PM peak hour was the number of available gaps. Now, this is for an entire hour. So basically, the AM between seven and nine, the highest hour, or between four and six, four and five, the PM peak hour, to determine the number of available gaps. So for instance, at any one time, at Spruce Street, there's the signal changes. Obviously, there's some gaps. If it's a 25-second gap, that's basically five, five-second gaps. So what was basically was identified is the blue, the number of available gaps in both the AM and the PM peak hour. And then here's the number of westbound right turns. This is the vehicles that are exiting the project and needing to travel across the three lanes to get into that U-turn. And again, in both of these cases, we're right about 50% of what the available gaps are. And again, that's in a gap study. That's part of the information, again, that we'll be providing to the DOT as well. And then again, we did this. This is basically the southbound traffic that ultimately will be coming into the traffic from the south. Now, they'll be using those, basically the same gaps to cut across. And again, from a standpoint, we will again be submitting this information to the FDOT as well. I won't spend too much time on this because Ms. Terrapini did a great job, but as part of the project and as part of the development, the developer has developed management strategies, which include not only, again, the intensity, but the density reduction, as well as some of the access management strategies related to safety, et cetera, that I've been talking about, as well as some of the commuter assistance and several of the liberal community design features. So with it, that's my presentation, and I'm free to answer some additional questions.
Questions by the commission?
Yes, I have one.
Mayor?
Uh, thank you. Theoretically, it seems like, you know, your theory is going to work to be able to cross three lanes with no issues at all, because, to count to five. Are you planning to have, to be able to verify that with actually real cars when the development's finished? And if it doesn't work, what you're just saying is, what are you planning to do with it?
Well, I'll say this. In terms of, like I said, our next step is to have to basically go through the FDOT permitting process. I will say, again, I've worked in several different areas across the state of Florida, and the District 7, which is what we're having to deal with, is one of the most stringent districts I've ever had to deal with. And for them to allow, not only to allow what is being proposed, but to also recommend and then ultimately to mandate is something that, again, I think provides additional, I would like to say assurance, that this is something that ultimately is going to be best for this project and for the city. So again, the hardest stringent, again, review agency that, again, we've had to be up against, and they're the ones that are proposing that. I think that speaks volumes.
But, but what I'm asking is, when the project is finished, when the development's completed, and you're going to have real cars, and they're actually trying to cross three lanes, if that doesn't work, are you planning to do something with that to fix it?
We'll have to see if the DOT, if the FDOT, again, provides us the permit, we're allowed to go out there, based upon, again, the available gaps. I see no reason for that not to work. So.
You still didn't?
Yeah. I don't know that we're planning to do anything, so I do not know that. We'll see if Mr. Johnson wants to answer that differently.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any other questions? Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation on this aspect. I do think that what you brought up between the commercial office and residential was pretty eye-opening. Thanks. You got your mask. So I think that was really eye-opening in my perspective, seeing commercial office and then residential. That was a good sign, I thought, for the property. So my question is, how far is the turn lane being proposed from the entrance from the northbound? Do you know that?
No, I mean, that's actually part of our design process that we'll be doing with the FDOT.
Okay. So I, how do I phrase this? I've witnessed a lot of close calls and encounters going southbound on US-19 with these types of turn lanes, where people do U-turns and so on. Has it been evaluated to have like a, some type of signal tied in with like the Spruce signal and the Dixie Highway signal, so that there would be a signal for the U-turn? It would be a red light for the U-turn, and then it would be a green light once the Dixie Highway and Spruce are turned red? Do you know what I'm talking about? I think, I think over by the International Airport off Hillsboro, there's something similar to that, where it's a left-hand turn only.
Right.
Has that been evaluated from a safety standpoint at all?
Not at this time, and I know, I do know what you're speaking of. I think the hard part there is that because of things in terms of other driveways, other connections that are between, like Spruce, Beckett, et cetera, that would provide additional vehicles in there, you really can't have that hooked up, because you might say it's green, because this is stopped, and somebody's coming from another driveway that you can't provide. So they cannot provide guidance, i.e. through a signal, to a car that's basically not controlled.
Well, it wouldn't be like a full signal, so there would still be a stop going north and south to allow a safe U-turn for the 400 and, or the 760 parking places, plus deliveries, is what I'm getting at in that aspect. So is that something that you could have a discussion with the DOT about? Because that's a concern I have from a safety standpoint. I'm not necessarily concerned for the safety of the residents in the apartment complex. I'm more concerned with the safety of the residents going north and south on US-19, because though, although you say it's a five-second, someone might actually take the three-second one and then cause an accident. And that's what I'm concerned about as a commissioner on the board.
Just to address that, we can definitely, when we, when we go in through the permitting process, one of the things that we last talked about with the DOT in our October meeting was they were actually gathering information as part of existing ones that did to be able to provide that, because they realized, they want it, and this is, also deals with your first question, in terms of the distance spacing. So they've actually been doing some research at several of these throughout the district, so they're going to be providing that information to us as part of the design, so we can ask in terms about some of the other traffic control, to see what they've seen at some of those other locations.
Okay. City attorney, is that something we could add as a condition to the application?
That they would go through that process?
Yeah, well, it would be an addition, that they actually bring it up with DOT and have something that we just discussed.
So the answer is yes, you could.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Donovan?
Sorry, are you done, Vice Mayor?
Um, yeah, I'm done. Thank you.
All right. Just thinking about a couple of potential issues that maybe you could help me understand. So if I'm going right out of the neighborhood, and I know I need to get over, I need to make that U-turn, but I can't do it. Let's say traffic jam, you know, the lanes are too full. What's stopping me from just staying in that right lane, and then at the Beckett Way signal, turning into St. Luke's and getting right into the St. Luke's left-hand light? Because they actually have a light there. So I'm just thinking as a, you know, if I'm a crafty driver and I'm in the morning and traffic's bad, what's to stop me from just driving, you know, taking that right out of the neighborhood, driving, you know, right 200 yards tops, and just turning into St. Luke's and trying to use their light?
There's nothing preventing that.
Okay. And that's why I think it's just so, I know you're pretty early in the process. That's an understatement when it comes to getting the U-turn stuff approved, and we'll get more details on it. But that's something that concerns me, just knowing that, you know, again, busiest time for medical office is going to be in that morning hour or that evening hour, you know, right when people are getting off work or before work. Just kind of moving in and out in there, trying to abuse that light. And then what's, what's the logic for not having an acceleration lane when you're making that right? Is it too close to the bridge?
No, no, it's actually the, over, I would say, over the last probably decade, that the DOT has gone away from those, and they will really, in almost all cases, I cannot tell you the last time they permitted one. It's just because of safety, if you can just imagine this. So basically, you're pulling out, again, they don't do them on DOT roads anymore, at least any ones that I'm aware of. So you're, you're basically pulling out, and you've got somebody up there in front of you waiting to go, and then all of a sudden, because you could have these back in, you know, earlier days, they could be up for 100, 200 feet. So you've got all of a sudden, a couple like stacking. So you're going, you're looking over, and basically you're accelerating, then you go and you stop, the person behind you goes, and boom. They've seen an incredible, basically in terms of the amount of quote-unquote, which is a crashes that they were causing, was more than they were offsetting. So they basically did it and said, just for instance, in this case, we'd much rather the person make an observation of when there's a gap for everything coming to be able to do that, as opposed to going and having to look 180 degrees over their shoulder.
That's a great answer. That makes a lot of sense. I hadn't considered that. And then my last just point is that this southbound US-19, especially in the morning, is going to be a lot worse than northbound. Northbound could be completely open for them to go and try to make that U-turn. My kind of concern is for the morning hours, let's say everybody's getting across easily, just because northbound mornings aren't as bad as southbound mornings. You know, everybody's getting across easily. How long is that U-turn lane going to be to the point where they're going to, you know, stack up in the U-turn lane waiting to get on the southbound?
A great question. And that is part of our process, because with the permitting process with the DOT, two things, they're going to be providing us information, again, as I mentioned to the Vice Mayor, that they've actually been doing at several of those locations. We're actually going to identify, based upon the number of trips that we're anticipating to use that in the morning, to see what that ultimate queue could be. And then again, based upon the gap study that was done, to basically, it's kind of a logarithm to see what we had anticipate for dispersion. So if we need it to be, you know, eight vehicles, that's at least a queue of 200 feet, plus the deceleration lane would be. So in that case, it could be 575 feet with a deceleration plus that. So that's part of the analysis that we're doing with the DOT.
Gotcha. Okay. I appreciate your responses. Thank you.
Any other questions from the commission?
I had a follow-up question.
Vice Mayor?
Uh, thank you. A quick question about the deceleration lane going northbound into the property. Has there been any discussion about tying the U-turn to where the, an individual can make a U-turn onto the deceleration lane? So you're ultimately extending the deceleration lane further south? So you're taking it into the, you're making a U-turn into the fourth lane instead of the one, two, three lanes of US-19?
It's my understanding, and I think I understand what you're saying, basically, if the deceleration lane is 400 feet, have it kind of go just right in?
Yeah.
From the, I believe, basically, again, depending on what some of the research said, from what I understand, there is basically some, they want to be able to provide some spacing separation, just like they do when they're going to have the actual acceleration going into the others. I'm not as sure what that is, to be honest with you. So we will actually bring that up as well with the DOT, just to find out.
Okay. And then you're the traffic expert, so is there a bus stop at all in this area? Do you, are you aware of that from a traffic study standpoint?
I'm honestly not sure. Part of the DOT study that we're going to do, we spoke earlier about the pedestrian, basically bicycle and transit, that's basically part of what we also include in that, so.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions from the commission? So, Mr. Armstrong, you want to call your next witness? Thank you, sir.
I have no further witnesses to the commission.
So are you available to answer questions, then? There's a couple of questions that are going to be posed of you.
Sure. And we're happy, sure, we're happy to entertain the questions, no doubt. And depending upon what the questions are, I may suggest we go into a brief recess, because I suspect I'm going to need to confer with my client and be able to give you a quick response to the questions presented by the commission, if that would be acceptable.
Thank you. So Commissioner Vaticchio, if you have a question, or Mr. Armstrong?
I do, from the civil side.
Yes, sir.
From the civil engineering side, I have a couple of questions. I'm trying to take them in order. He, I went over the plans, and because of the way they were broken up and everything, and the backup, it was hard for me to get a handle on how much grading there actually is going to be. I saw some contours floating around that looked like they were going to be, they were proposed a part of the plan, and some that were existing. Is there an exhibit or anything that anyone brought with them tonight to try and go over that a little bit? Specifically, I've got some questions around the city property. It looks like there may be some grading. I may misunderstood what those plans were showing onto that property a little bit, which I'm not sure how that would work. And then also, that parcel that is being offered to the city at the north side, there looked like there was going to be some grading down in that area as well. So those are the kind of questions that I have.
Sure. And to that end, I think the best qualified person in our team to give you the responses to the questions you're asking is Artie Centron, who is a professional engineer, who's been intimately involved in designing the site from an engineering standpoint. So I'd ask that he come forward, briefly explain his professional credentials, and then commence to answer your questions. Is that acceptable?
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Nathan Lee with Kimley Horn and Associates, the engineer of record on the project, and this is Artie Centron, who is working with me on the project. I got your question, and I'm going to let Artie answer it.
Commissioner Artie Centron here, 1718 West Gray Street, Tampa, Florida, 33607 with Kimley Horn. I'm here to answer any questions.
The, the amount of grading that will actually take place, I know there's, the preservation land isn't going to be touched, but where the buildings are, I'm a little familiar with that, that there's some fairly high spots in that. It looks like it's going to be leveled in that area. Certainly, the retention pond area is, is going to, is going to be excavated. I would be curious to see, and that's going to be a wet pond, obviously. So I don't know what the water table is at that location. I just want to make sure that, that it just, it looks like we're going to, I guess, I'd like to know whether there's going to be a surprise as far as what you're looking at right now and what the project is going to wind up being, because we were surprised on another project down here at the corner of Mears, and it was a lot of discussion. So if we could get that on the table.
Yeah, there has been extensive topographic survey completed, and we have looked at it rather extensively, but keep in mind, this is still at the conceptual level. However, we have still, for lack of a better term, flushed out the majority of these issues. I'm assuming you're talking about the city piece to the south. You had mentioned there was a grading question.
The south side of that, it looks like there may or may not be some grading being done along that area.
Correct. And just to clarify, you're talking about the piece that the city currently already owns. Yes. Yeah. Along that area, we have a proposed garage area. Along that, there's going to be a portion where there'll need to be retaining wall to kind of buy off some of that grade. Outside of that, the intention is to stay outside of any property line and grade up from there. We understand that the site has a vast amount of elevation change across, in anywhere from elevation 14 down to 5. The intent is to mass grade the site, bring it up along, along its, you know, respective areas, stay outside of any other property lines, and utilize retaining wall at a minimum where it's needed. But the intent is to grade and stay within the areas that we have.
Okay. And then the parcel that is being offered to the city at the north, looks like there's going to be some grading heading down towards that 25-foot setback from the top of bank, I guess.
Correct. There is. And in that area, again, it changes, kind of from north to south, it gets higher to lower, but it also kind of gets lower to higher from west to east. It's kind of a weird dynamic over there. So our, top of our pond bank's going to be at elevation eight-ish, once we kind of get into that, you know, level of a design. And the intent, again, is just to grade back in daylight and catch that existing grade there.
What would be the largest, if you can recall off the top of your head, the largest What, what would be the, the largest, if you can recall off the top of your head, the largest difference between what's existing right now and what is going to be, what is being proposed in terms of, let's say 14 elevation, you're going to go down to six or three or not three, but.
I would say the largest elevation difference currently, and again, just to, this is still conceptual phase. Once we start getting into that, you know, final design plan and working with SWIFTMUD and getting some of that criteria, this may change. So, you know, currently that northern part of the site, you know, that northeastern side is around elevation 14, 16, 17. I'd say from there, it's going to be cut down. There'll be kind of like a berm, if you kind of understand what I'm saying. It's around to elevation six, seven or eight. I can't say fully with full, you know, exact, you know, elevation, but that's kind of the interpretation over there currently.
Will that material remain on site?
Well, the intent is to raise the site, so there will be a, you know, a mass grading effect. So there will be some cut or fill to be brought in on a site as well. So the intent is to keep all material that's suitable for suitable fill on site. And anything that's dilithrous or full of organic matter or whatnot, maybe hauled off site or will be hauled off site, I should say.
And, and with all the trees that are going to be cut, where is that? How's that material going to be handled? I, I would hope and I would assume that is going to be hauled off site somewhere.
That would be my assumption, but I wouldn't want to speak to that. That's kind of a construction means and methods thing. But my, the intent, I'm sure, is to haul it off and, and do what needs to be done with that material.
Okay. Yeah, that, that's, we've had problems with that in the past of being dug and filled.
Oh, no, yeah, with, with that creating organic matter and you kind of a recipe for settlement. It's, it's, the intent is to clear and grub as necessary to get to that suitable fill and then build up from there.
Okay. Let me make sure I don't have anything else. I do have some general questions for Mr. Armstrong with his client. Let me just see if that's. I think that's it. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Hang on, sir. So are there any other questions from the commission, Vice Mayor?
I know you had a question, so.
Yeah, I had a question about the flood maps and the projections of rising tides, et cetera. So is that something you can just touch base and?
Yes. So what we are, as far as design criteria that we would design a site like this for, we are regulated nationally by design criteria from FEMA. And we are regulated locally statewide by design criteria from the Southwest Florida Water Management District. We have to, like far as, as for, as far as design criteria, we have to plan for the, any structure out there being one foot higher than the base flood elevation that's issued by FEMA. And that is what they put in there as a buffer for any changes in hydraulics or hydrology that may be planned for or may happen in the future. So all of our proposed structures for this project are going to meet or exceed that one foot buffer, which is called, they call it freeboard. So that's, that's what our design criteria is. So that's what we will design for.
Understood. Thank you.
So Commissioner Vatici, does she said you had one more question?
Yes. If, if the city-owned parcel was to be developed into a parking lot by the city, notwithstanding a place ordering like that, is there ability to incorporate that drainage into the project site?
It could always be looked at. Currently, it's not being accounted for. And just to clarify, you're talking about the city-owned portion currently, not the future dedicated. Currently, that portion of sites being looked at as the city-owned portion. So it has not been accounted for any sort of drainage treatment or attenuation.
Okay. But do you think based on what you know of the site, that that may be possible?
Based upon the elevation that we would be bringing our site to, would be leaving that portion of site a little bit lower. It would be hard to get that positive drainage at that point without filling up your site to get there. So it's always a possibility, as just right now, without, you know, fully looking into it, to tell you exactly how that can work.
Yeah. Okay. It's, that's good. Thank you. You answered the question. Thank you.
Any other questions from the commission? I don't see any. So Mr. Armstrong, did you want to finish off your presentation?
I don't have any other witnesses to present unless there are questions coming to us from the commission that one of my subject matter experts can speak to. That said, I think is where we left off before the civil engineer came forward. I think there were one or more, one that characterizes business questions coming from the commission to our client. I was, you know, hopeful, just respectfully suggesting if we could have those, take a quick recess, I would then be able, in a position on behalf of my client who's here this evening to respond, but it'd be probably most efficient to do it all at one time. If I could have a list of what those questions are, it would be helpful.
Okay. Question number one, Commissioner Vatici, does you have a question?
Yes, the, um, the one question was whether it was a hard requirement that our, that the, um, that the, that the property couldn't be given gratis to the city. And we're talking about that 1.85 acre to the north, rather than being subtracted as an impact fee credit. The, the parcel that would be used for a kayak launch, that's number one. Number two, the possibility of using, given the, maybe perhaps the desire of consistency in the design, perhaps with the ability of utilizing the project professionals to help also with any design effort that the, the city decides to pursue with that city-owned parcel of creating a trailhead parking lot at that area. And then also the amenities that I asked Mrs. Terapany about with the sidewalks to, as a connector. And then also, um, the, um, the 1.85 acre site to the north, utilizing those same professionals for whatever needs to be done there as well. And including, um, I would suspect because I saw in the tree, in the tree mitigation plant, that some trees are going to be removed from that site. So I suspect there's going to be some lane clearing on that anyway, on that 1.85 acre site. I, I just wanted to get confirmation of that, that we could rely on the, um, on the project contractor to be able to clear that site for the city to, if we do proceed with accepting it as a kayak landing.
Is that your thought with appropriate impact fee credits for those expenses?
For, yes, you mean in terms of the work?
Yes.
Yes, that's right. Yeah. Yeah. I don't have any issue with that.
Okay, just checking.
I mean, me personally, I don't know what the rest of the commission's going to say, but yeah.
Any other questions from the commission, business questions that Mr. Armstrong needs to talk to his clients about before we take a quick break? Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I've got some questions about landscaping. Can I talk to the architect about that?
I think we have our landscape, landscape architect here who'd be in the best position to respond. I can bring him forward.
What if I want to ask you, you don't think you can answer?
I would, I would be clueless.
Okay. Landscape architect, architect sounds like a great idea.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Good evening. Weston Rogers, landscape architect, state of Florida, worked with Kim Lee Horn.
Great. Thank you. Just a, I think the design's good overall. A couple of recommendations I want to ask you to consider. Vibram odoratism, I'm sure you're familiar with those. I would recommend that you substitute that with a Vibram suspensum, just for my longevity. Do you have any concerns with that?
No.
Okay. And then the Dayhun Holly, again, I have some concerns with that one from longevity standpoints, from disease and susceptibility to this area. Would you be against replacing it with a weeping yopon or some type of upright yopon? It's in the Holly family as well. Drought tolerant?
No, I do not oppose that.
Okay. Are you familiar with what water is being used to irrigate the property? Is it coming from a well or is it coming from reclaimed water? Do you, are you familiar with that?
We have not determined that at this time. As far as the water.
Okay. That's the only questions I had for landscape architect. I think the engineers maybe had an idea about that reclaimed water.
Any other questions of the landscape architect while he's here from the commission? Seeing none, Mr. Armstrong, back to you. You've heard your business questions. Thank you, sir. Business questions.
Unless there's more.
Are there any more business questions, Mr. Con, uh, Commissioner Connor has?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions pertaining to the reclaimed water line. I think that's an important aspect. If that's not being, there's a large piece of property being irrigated, correct? So if it's not having access to reclaimed water line, I believe one of the other commissioners brought it up. I thought it was a good idea. If you could ask your client about that or give us some more clarity of what that looks like. Also like a bus shelter. I don't see one in the plans, but if their DOT is going to have one, I would imagine somewhere along the property line requirement, I would think. I would like to see at least the designs match the building itself. So the shelter should match the way the buildings look. I would ask that question.
Before I get too far much further behind on answering?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I'm sorry. May I answer?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. With respect to the bus stop, my understanding, and we'll try to confirm it, is that the bus service is not extended that far north in Pinellas County.
But the Pasco County bus line comes right past that and goes north, right?
New information, we can look at the end of that.
Okay.
In terms of the reclaimed water, I think that would fall under the umbrella of our civil engineer who I know has looked at that. Those sorts of issues. Let me ask Artie to please come back again and respond to your questions.
Okay. Can I, can I ask a couple more questions before we go back to the civil engineer?
Sure.
Part of the question that I would ask too is, Ms. Terapany brought up the aspect that the developer has done lead certified projects before in the past. I would ask that this be a lead certified project. I'm not going to put a degree of what that looks like. But I do think it's important for this project to have some type of lead certification. I'm not asking for a platinum or gold, but at least some type of evaluation to commit that they're going to work towards that progress between now and the breaking ground. And then the sidewalks would be six feet wide from the development south to the Pinellas Trail. I think that was an area that we weren't sure about. What the current width is in the design process. And then some type of idea what total laid line would be for the EV parking, for potential growth in that aspect. Those are some I, areas that I think I want some clarification on from the applicant or from yourself. Is that fair? Okay.
Commissioner Donovan, your questions?
Yeah, thank you. I'm not sure if you got this one yet or had answered it yet, but I just want to know clearly, if we don't accept a land trade, what are your plans with that proposed park space? And is it going to be left to be open space or preserve?
And that's something we'll get back with you on.
Yep. That was my only question. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So there was a question, Mr. Armstrong, about reclaimed water. You wanted to bring your civil engineer up on?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. What was the question again? I'm sorry.
Yeah. Is the property going to, so there's obviously, it's a large piece of property that's going to be irrigated. Is it going to be irrigated with well water or irrigation with reclaimed water? Or is it going to be just regular water comes out of that?
Currently, the intent is to either, to either be potable, possibly well, we had to explore that, uh, that, that option. Similar to what Cindy had mentioned earlier, we've had several meetings with the city utility staff. The reclaimed water option has not come up. I'm not exactly sure where the reclaimed facility is located. I know that it's a, it's a good stretch away and that it was not for ease and available use at the time. So that's kind of where we're at right now with the, with the reclaim. So the intent is currently right now to feed the irrigation in the site with a portable system, possibly look at a well, but that was never fully vetted out.
Okay. So how does, um, like the sewer line that's going to be stretched from the property to the wastewater plant where the reclaimed water is processed and then sent back out? Is that, is, are the roads going to be dug up for that? Or is that going to be shooting under roads? Do you know what that would look like?
So, so currently we are in the very preliminary stages. We had met with Ray Page and his team with Adura, who's the, your guy's private civil engineer. There's a few different options. Directional drill would probably be the primary option to not, you know, to, to lessen the evasiveness of that. So, you know, obviously where there would be drilling pits, you would have to kind of open up. But the intent is to stay outside of the road.
Sure.
And then be within the right of way when we have to cross over US 19. Keeping in mind that this is all DOT right of way currently from the site down to that intersection. And we'll have to coordinate accordingly with DOT and, and do whatever it is that they want us to do. But the intent is to open cut where we can, directional drill when we need to, and so on and so forth till we get to the wastewater treatment facility plant.
Okay. Yeah. So, I mean, with the drilling going on currently, it seems like there'd be an opportunity to go the other direction as well. You're taking the water to the plant, you can take the water back to the plant. I know it's not going to go in the same pipe, but at least it could be something discussed. I would think since the equipment's already there, it would just be extra conduit or extra piping laid then at that point.
Depending on the required size or required amount, if there's capacity with the reclaimed line, you know, there could be an additional amount of impact. From doing preliminary utility kind of exploration with the local utility providers, we do know that that corridor along US 19 is very, very packed full of utilities already, including a rather large water line that's consists of your guys' utility. So it's always something that can be looked at. I know currently looking at the, the force main, it's, it's, it's already tight. We're already kind of trying to thread a needle to begin with.
I got another quick question for you. So I saw the route of the sewer line. And I know that the Pinellas Trail runs pretty much the same direction. Once you get to there, it goes under US 19. Was there any thought with trying to work with the county right of way or something along those lines to go under 19 there instead of trying to directional drill under US 19 or something along those lines?
Currently, we're still rather preliminary. So we're always open to, to look at other routes, you know, and speaking with the, the city of Tarpon Springs Utility Department. This is kind of what we preliminary looked at. We're currently doing kind of preliminary due diligence to kind of find out where we have room to kind of do some of these maneuvers. So I know that it was possibly talked about going that route. It's, nothing's been set in stone at this point in time.
Okay. Yeah. I'm just thinking from what you were talking about, a heavy utilized area of utilities that could be an, an ease space for you.
Just to clarify, are you saying to utilize the Pinellas Trail as part of our route?
So to go under US 19? And if that's an option to go the, on the right of way of the Pinellas Trail, if there is right of way, then yes. If that's easier to do.
We, we have, we actually have thought about and looked about it. It hasn't been fully fleshed out. So if you're saying there's a possibility to utilize that Pinellas Trail, possibly with something for us to, uh, to look at.
It's a question I have. I have no idea if it's a possibility or not from the county's perspective. So.
And currently I'm in the same standing.
Okay.
My thought is the county may be a little protective over it, but we're, we're open to ask if it's going to be viable.
No, I, I think it would be worthwhile to look at the reclaimed water line. Mr. Armstrong, to discuss that as well. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay. So Mr. Mayor, I would suggest you have a question for the civil engineer?
Yeah.
Okay. Hang on a second, Mr. Centron. You've got another question.
Well, the reclaimed water line, I mean, my understanding is I, I don't know whether you're agreeing to it or not, but are, are you saying that y'all are, you're going to make the decision this evening on that? I would think that there would have to be some coordination with the city staff.
Oh, I'm not saying that we agree or disagree to any sort of connection to reclaim. I, I would have to agree with you and say that that's, it would have to be a full discussion with, with the city staff as this is something new that's being brought up to us currently tonight. I don't think that's something that could be decided.
Right. I think it's, I think it's very, very important, but I'm not sure that we're going to get the definitive answer on that this evening. So. That's, that's it. Thank you.
So Mr. Mayor, if we could just break for a few minutes, maybe five minutes, let Mr. Armstrong speak to his client and we come back.
Yes, we can take five minutes process, uh, recess. Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Already done there.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, I'll take pepperoni.
It's cold in here, isn't it, just me? It's a little brisk, right?
It's fresh.
I tried to get it down.
I think I got a vent blown right on the back of my head or something.
I'll tell you what, before you were, I think, on the board, the vents would blow and blow our flags.
Oh, I know.
I don't know, were you hearing that happen or not, but.
It gets chilly in here sometimes.
Yeah.
We want this room.
It's difficult to drink when you have a mask on. Do the same thing. Actually gotten colder as the night gone on in here.
What's the temperature out there? It's winter.
50s, yeah, it's only 15, 52. With the lows in the mid 40s.
52 is cold.
Really?
It was.
Very cold.
Yeah. Yeah, we haven't even had public comments in there.
19 would have to do. I am 19. You gotta do that one.
Are we back in session, folks?
Not yet.
We now reconvene the VOC meeting at 10:25 PM. Mr. Trast, back to you.
Thank you, sir. So, Mr. Armstrong, you've had an opportunity to meet with your client. Did you want to address the commission on the issues that were raised before we broke?
Yes, sir, I would like to address that commission. I have a list. I believe I got everything. If I didn't, it was an unintentional omission and we'll, we'll sort through it. A lot of discussion from the commission this evening about the proposed park site that we proposed to dedicate. They asked the city to accept exchange impact fee credits and our discussion outside combined and based mainly upon the feedback and the discussion from the commission this evening. I think we probably need to withdraw our request to dedicate it. Just have it remain as part of the site. That moots any issue around a credit. And in terms of what will happen to that property, it will become part of our stormwater system. So that's our, our response to that question. There was also a question relating to designing a landscape, as I understood it, the city-owned parcel, the, what I call the entranceway. There was a request that the, our consultants design the landscaping, as I understood it, to be consistent with our landscaping for uniformity purposes. And we are prepared to do that up to a cap of $10,000 in fees paid to our third-party consultants for which we would get credit for those fees spent assuring that level of uniformity. Can I explain that clearly?
No.
There was a discussion about the width of the sidewalk to the park. We can commit to a five-foot wide sidewalk. Anything wider than that creates material engineering problems on our end. So I think five feet is beyond standard and candidly, we are just, as a practical matter, you know, impeded from going beyond a five-foot wide sidewalk. In terms of the bus shelter, we did have some, some deformation from what was brought up earlier from that side of the dais earlier. What I'm going to suggest on that, we'll, we'll be gathering again in one week. And let us go back and talk to the various transit authorities, get more information and come back to you when we meet again next week and address it then if we could. With respect to the potential of lead certification of the buildings, our proposal there is that we would hire a Florida green building consultant at our expense to, to determine the feasibility and appropriateness of a level of lead certification on the project. In terms of the electric chargers and the conduit, we, this client understands the importance of that and candidly, we would just like to have a little faith that we're going to put in what's necessary and appropriate to serve as the project. Morgan is very environmentally sensitive. I don't know how else to define or deliverable. And finally, the last issue on my list is the reclaimed water, which is a significant one. And it was suggested by Commissioner Vaticios earlier. I don't think we can fix that one tonight. What I'm going to suggest on that, we're coming back in a week, is let us work with your staff, gather more data and leave that as an open item to resolve hopefully at our meeting next week. That's everything on my list. If I've missed something, please remind me.
Hey, was there anything else on the list that you wanted to discuss, Mr. Vaticios? You're looking like you have a question?
Just on the, on that parcel to the north, just for clarification, because you came through a little muffle, you're withdrawing the offer of, of, of the land.
I, I would prefer to characterize it as amending our application.
You're amending the application to withdraw the offer of the land?
Exactly. And candidly, that's really based upon the feedback we're sensing from the board. Not an interest in accepting it. And that's fine. We thought it was a good idea. Maybe we misfired, doesn't matter, but we can, I think, my sense of it is the board would be more comfortable not taking it. So we're happy to keep it in our hands, used as part of our stormwater system and moot that issue. That just seemed to be a, a logical place to go on that.
Okay. All right, so Vice Mayor has his finger up. So I think he has one more question for you, Mr. Armstrong.
Yeah, if you could just help me on the clarification. So the, if it's a sidewalk greater than five feet, its additional engineering is required? Did I understand that correctly?
I can have my engineer come up and give you greater color on that.
But, well, I mean.
He'll explain the engineering issue that's triggered at a width that's greater than five feet.
Okay. And then what if you do two sidewalks next to each other that are six foot or three feet wide?
I, I think just a little bit further clarify was that currently existing, per survey that we've received, there is a five-foot sidewalk that runs along the east side of US 19 that, from our property down to the Pinellas Trail.
Okay.
So we've looked at it at a very high level. It's, keep in mind, this is DOT property, DOT right of way. Any sort of modification to that would be in regards to what they allow for both a driveway and drainage perspective. Currently, from a very high level look and not really diving into it, there is a swale system right along that highway, I mean, right along the sidewalk, excuse me. Any widening of that sidewalk is going to impede into that swale system for the DOT driveway or for, for the DOT US 19. We can't speak to saying that it can't be done fully, but knowing and looking at it now at its current state and current condition, we know that it will cause impacts.
Is there a swell on both sides or just one side?
Off the top of my head, I couldn't tell you with full certainty.
Okay, so if you expand it to one direction of the swell, it wouldn't necessarily have an impact, right?
Well, keep in mind too, there's also the wetland on the other side. So we're kind of pinched between DOT right of way, drainage, DOT right of way itself, wetlands and other easements are in place there as well.
Okay, but the sidewalks there currently today?
There's currently connectivity from our site down to US Pinellas or Pinellas Trail.
Okay, I didn't realize that was the case.
Yeah, yeah, it's, there's already there.
Okay, all right, thank you. And then, Mr. Armstrong, to understand the, the offer for the landscape plan for the city-owned parcel.
Yes, sir.
Can, I missed that on, on the discussion, but so help me understand a little bit more, the, the applicant is willing to, or you, the applicant, are willing to do up to $10,000 plan for the landscaping of the city parcel? Did I understand that correctly? To match what's going on?
Up to $10,000.
Okay.
A, a, a study and a, and a design of a landscaping plan for the city-owned parcel. So to be consistent with our landscaping plan and for which we would receive dollar-for-dollar credit for our funding of our consultant to create that design.
Okay, and where would the credit go? Would it go to just impact fee somewhere or would it go to? Do you have an idea? It's to be determined.
Do with.
That's fine. Okay.
You all would likely have a fund. It would be used within a certain area and it would just go wherever impact fee credits go in that geographic area within the city.
All right, thank you.
Okay, since there are no other questions or comments, Mr. Armstrong, are you done presenting your case? We can go to the public?
Oh, yes.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, so anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this particular item? And if so, if you could step forward, tell us your name and address and go ahead and proceed. I see Ms. Wade is up. Ms. Wade, were you sworn in earlier?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and the board. Y'all addressed many of my issues and I'll just emphasize them quickly. A 2020 Gallup poll found that 65% of Americans favored protecting the environment, even if it meant curbing economic growth. But I and many others don't see these as either or issues. Tarpon could be a model for implementing environmental protection while managing growth. Until our goal of funding a full-time sustainability position in our city is met, we depend on you, our Board of Commissioners, to protect us and our environment. The Ancloue Harbors Project offers you and the developer an opportunity to model a partnership in planning for site. We appreciate the developers' installation of EV charging parking spots and efforts toward minimal land disruption. These are a great first These are a great first, these are great first steps and indicate their awareness of sustainability issues, but they can do more. Please encourage requests require that this project includes solar as a part of their energy plan. Their clubhouse offers a great starting point. A level of lead certification is another goal that could easily be achieved through thoughtful approach in appliance choices, lighting selection, reclaimed water, impermeable hardscape. The opportunity to demonstrate positive leadership and to employ a community partnership here is tremendous. I had sent you some of these things in a previous letter that's on page 230 of your packet. The number-one issue, I think, is traffic. And I'm not an expert on that, but it's certainly an issue. Secondly, the generic, I'm sorry, rather unappealing exterior of the buildings needs enhancement. They can do better. The current drawings show a structure that could be anywhere and we deserve a more relevant edifice at the gateway to our city. Thirdly, please request detailed drawings of the garages or carports. Nothing is shown about those, nothing's currently included. Although there's an attempt by the developers to make it look like amenities three and four benefit the city, their SWIFTMUD approval is sketchy or questionable as is the likelihood that folks outside the community gates would have any access to them other than by water. The city should not be in the business of providing, installing, or maintaining anything within their gated for-profit community or giving a credit for this. Board, you and the city staff are our eyes and ears and protection. This is an opportunity to assure that this coveted, cherished, and off-protected property fulfills its potential to its highest and best use. Please take the time necessary to do it right. This could be something really special. And I forgot to give my address. Do you want me to do that now?
Please do.
It's, I'm sorry, 1095 Main Sales, Julie Wade. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, Mr. Delakis, I see your hand up. Address, please.
Peter Delakis, 514 Ashland Avenue. I showed this to Irene. It's a bank statement to concerned citizens of Tarpon Springs. Care of Peter Delakis, 514 Ashland Avenue. I am the president of the Friends of the Anclot, AKA Concerned Citizens. So at this point, I'm asking 10 minutes, which is previously provided to groups of this nature. First, I want to thank Mr. Armstrong for his presence. Quite a difference from 15 years ago, huh? No full house. And I have an answer to his question about the email from the Turn the Tide group. That's because people in Tarpon didn't know about this. I'm Friends of the Anclot and I got an email, a text about a week, 10 days ago about this. And then I came in and I spoke to Renee and we looked at some of the plans. And we've been trying to get the word out. So the reason you probably got an email today at 1:00 with so many of the residents didn't know about it. Ms. Terrapini happened to mention that this was, or Mr. Armstrong or Ms. Terrapini both mentioned that there was conceptual plan review in June, submitted August 20th, TRC 9310-2, a community meeting, and 1116 P&amp;Z. None of us knew about any of this for us to begin any kind of cross-opposition to this. There's a number of factors here that I think is important to bring forth. You talk about, I hear a lot from everybody here presenting preliminary. We'll get that back to you on the final design. We don't know. That's stuff that needs to be presented to you before you even go forward. So basically, you're going to say, okay, yeah, go ahead and do this and spend all this money for the next few months, maybe another year, doing all this process where maybe at the end, it doesn't get approved. Information that you've been asking for is not being provided. Secondly, as I mentioned during public comments, no backup. So there's no way to go up and check some of the information in there. Now, as far as some of the access, I have different things here, but I want to go back to the traffic part here, the access on the backside. Ms. Terrapini said that the back road is 40 feet wide and if we had to do it, you'd have to condemn. And it goes through a neighborhood. One, it doesn't go through a neighborhood. It's on the south side of Sale Harbor. And I have to applaud Mr. Armstrong and Ms. Terrapini. In the 15 years since this last presented, they learned their lessons in a way of what to show to you to make this attractive. No back access. But remember, we put in Spruce Street all the way to Jasmine? So you can create an access so people safely can get out to 19, to a light that was put in to give them in-and-out access. Now, the development that is just north of the St. Luke's, and I forget that subdivision that's up there, but years ago, they used to complain because they had to go out and make the U-turn. You're going to create the same situation. So if you don't create the U-turn lanes, people going north can go up to Beckett and take the left-turn lane to make the U-turn there. And going southbound, they can go to Spruce Street and turn around at Flammer right there and come back up. There's no need to condemn that road back there. They can purchase the property on both sides, five feet on both sides to create the 50 feet. Reclaimed water, y'all been doing on that? That's great. Environmentally, in the backup, it says a take permit for the eagles. And I had Ms. Vincent explain to me that it's not that they're going to take the nests out, but that's what they call it to get the permit to do the construction. But I didn't hear anything about the 31, 32 gopher tortoise holes. And then their backup, they explain they're going to either do it by backhoe or bucket. And if you look at the diagrams of where all those gopher tortoise holes are, I can see the economical easy way is you just go backhoe, 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 and that's how you end up killing a lot of them. And if none of y'all were around then, when Walmart tried first to go in there and start taking them out, we stopped them because they didn't have the permits to do it then. Y'all are being offered a little piece of property on the northwest corner as a stopping place for a canoe and kayak. We've got the dog park, you got a beautiful canoe kayak launch. And on the North Anclot River Park, there's canoes and kayak stops there. So to say it's just going to be a canoe and kayak spot is absurd. And as far as the reclaimed water, the water treatment plant's right here, it's a big tank. There's no reason why you can't connect it. And also, if you check into it, I forget the name of the mobile home park, Leisure Lake something, but the mobile home park that's just south. Years ago, they had problems and we ran a line out to them where they put in a pump station. So all of that infrastructure is there. With regards to this parcel itself, it's going to be gated. It locks out the park. You could throw all these amenities in there, inside there, but it's only going to be 404 residents that will have advantage of it. You're leaving out over 25,000 Tarpon Springs residents and other people who would come if that was a real park. You've seen me here numerous times asking for you to put forth a Florida communities trust, and that would be our park. And we could have all kinds of things for our own residents. And I got to call out some people here. Chris, when you first ran against Frank, when we had that debate in the conference room, you blasted Frank for turning to this county and saying we didn't want that as a park. And you used that as leverage to win that election. And you promised us you would work with us to get that park. Mark, how many times were we in your office and you said it was your legacy to make that a park? And yet, this has been going on for months and you didn't let us know? Shame on you. And Cindy, oh my goodness, turncoat.
Mayor or city attorney?
You were there when we, they were fighting it in the first place. So you've had an opportunity to make this a park, an ecological park. You could create boat ramps, you could create canoes, you could have had trails, you could have had in the back Uplands area, an equestrian area. Over in Oldsmar, they have an equestrian training where it's therapy for people. There's all kinds of advantage. When we spoke to y'all before, we talked to you about having a disabled veterans fitness park there. All of these things attract people to Tarpon. And the property would have been for us, the residents. Yet you're turning it over to a private developer out of Houston who's going to make money and the buildings are going to look just like those that carry it, like Ms. Wade said. Ugly, ugly. That's what you want on the river? And you're asking for, oh, make it a little bit Greek-style? Come on. There's no reason you should be approving this project at this point. You should be tabling it till they come back with more definitive answers on all of the things you've been asking and not waiting till the final preliminary development plan. And as with regards to the wetland mitigation, it says, oh, well, just .91 acres. Well, any wetland mitigation out there is not what we want. We want the Brazilian peppers removed. We want more creative aspects of making that site available to all of our residents of the city and the county. Let me look at the rest of my notes here. And with regards to the parcel that was given, that was just a little tease to like wet your lips to $10,000. Just to wet your lips to get you to think, oh, yeah, this is great. And as Ms. Wade says, yeah, it's a start, but y'all are going to approve this, I know that. No matter what we say or how many residents come up and speak about this, you're going to do it. We know that because y'all are looking at cutting up Tarpon into pieces between what's going on out by the fire station, what's going out by Keystone, what's going out by the Mears Projects, all of these things. You're cutting up Tarpon and you're selling it off to the developers. Do what's right for our citizens and our community because once this is developed, that, that's gone.
Any other person from the public wishing to speak? I see no one in the audience. Ms. Jacobs, do we have any other emails that have been received on this particular gender item?
We do.
Okay, did you want to go ahead and read those, please?
Yes. The first one is from Beth Hovind. I am registering against the proposed Anclot Harbor zoning request. I viewed the site and reviewed the packet from the zoning board and have to disagree with the conclusions. One, in no way should the city approve a building request with only a 50-foot buffer from the river. We are anticipating increasing river heights as climate change continues to impact us. The city's coastal planning area and conservation element allows for 1,500-foot buffers in planning for the growth of Tarpon. The development, two, the development requires that 17 acres of the significant upland habitat be destroyed, more than 12 that will be preserved. Three, two small wetlands on the property will be destroyed. Four, the project requests a height variance from 45 to 53 feet. Five, there are 31 gopher tortoises borrows on the property and two eagles' nests. The city of Tarpon Springs should be preserving these areas. Six, Tarpon zoning under housing elements suggests a mix of adequate housing. This project is defined as a luxury development with no public transit access, so will not be affordable housing, which is what is needed in Pinellas County. Seven, the 1.84-acre park open to the public is a joke. There is no public access except by walking and it is in the outlier in residential areas. The users will be the renters and the kayakers who happen by. The entrance will be gated so no one else can drive to the park. I would expect even those walking in, if any, would likely be questioned. I recommend that if the building is done, it be on the north side of the site and that the city take ownership of the upland tree forests and the wetland areas, especially those near the river. Thank you for your consideration, Beth Hovind, Tarpon Springs. We have one additional one. It is from Rosemary Hunter. Good afternoon. With all due respect, I would like to express the Board of, to the Board of Commissioners, my concerns about the proposed Anclot Harbor development. This is a huge cluster development proposed adjacent to fragile wetlands. There has already been considerable loss of wildlife species in these areas. Perhaps it is time to make more stringent regulations on development, development within our city. Sincerely, Rosemary G. Hunter, Chesapeake Point, Tarpon Springs. And that is all that I have.
Thank you. Mr. Jump, is there anyone that wishes to speak that's on the Zoom call? Mr. Jump?
If anyone would like to speak, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in. In turn, we do have several raised hands. I'll allow the first one in.
Hold on, please. Mr. Trask, I need to extend the time of the meeting.
Yes, sir.
I need a motion to extend the time of the meeting.
Motion to extend to 11:30?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticios?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terrapini?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor Lizis?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Jump, go ahead and proceed.
Hello, this is Barbara Walker at 3019 Bradford Circle in Palm Harbor, 34685. I, I also wish that I had known about this a little bit sooner. I am concerned about the threatened, state-threatened sandhill cranes that nest on that property as well as the eagles. And when I think about it, first of all, I think the last thing in the world we need is more people in this county, but more cars in this county is even worse. I am in Eastlake and I have been coming into Tarpon, up Keystone Road to Lowe's and to that Walmart. And if it gets busy and crazy over there, I'm going to Oldsmar. So I want you to know that. That's just something, a decision I would make no matter where I lived, you know what I mean? But the, the other thing to me, climate change is of course a huge issue. And we're talking about big buildings, but how is it going to be managed for the wildlife after it's all said and done? The runoff, the fishing line, the rodenticide, because you have, these are big apartments where people live and we can't have rats here. How, how is that going to be handled after the fact? And can we, as cities and people, start including requirements for that? If there's trees coming out, what is that property's long-term plan for re-treating the property? We don't want to see what happened. What Kim Begay was so upset over at the Sunset Bay, where while all the trees went out, did anything else really go in? No, it's just not good for climate change. So we have real examples of all of these things all around us. And I would, I would beg that you table this, please, to allow a few more of us to weigh in and give you a more presentable plan in the end. And I thank you for your time and I hope you have a good night.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Mr. Jump, if you would allow the next person in, please.
Panayotti Culyas, 595 Peninsula Avenue. Anybody donating their time is simply donating their time for me to be speaking. These are my thoughts and expressions. Therefore, my mother, Maria Culyas, mother, say something.
Maria Culyas, 595 Peninsula Avenue.
And Annie Samarkis will be donating their time for me to be speaking. I first want to say, you all are lucky I'm not on the board over there because this would be a hard no. You know, the developers came unprepared. The citizens don't like to hear, I'm not sure, or that hasn't been explored yet when there's a team of attorneys, engineers, and plan developers there present. Morgan Group's corporate vision for a small town. What a sellout on the citizens of Tarpon Springs. Let's get these engineers... Let's get these engineers, pay everybody big bucks to come in here, tell us it's going to work and then ditch us once the project's done. I'm asking the board to all vote no or 2-2 because Townsend must recuse himself like in the past when his mother has presented other developers. This will give the citizens of Tarpon Springs the time to review and provide more evidence for a better project. And to the attorney's response, this project has been rushed and pushed under the disguise of COVID for the good old boy network and their interests. Previously, the citizens, including the Tara Panties, fought hard to stop Walmart for this and the commission needs to be aware of it all. You know, why can't Morgan Group donate more of the property to the city and build one or two less buildings? This concrete jungle of stacking rented apartments is absurd. There's no way for us to build a boat ramp with the parking, with parking donated by Morgan Group. There has to be a way. You know, the citizens need a boat ramp as well. And if we can build a man-made pond by an eagle's nest, I'm sure there's a way for us to build a boat ramp. And we don't want to hear, we haven't explored that yet, from your engineers. You know, these attorneys, engineers, site plan developers, they want to show off their credentials and tell you it's going to work, but they don't care about Tarpon Springs. They come in and get out. And to the planning and zoning board, what a disappointment to see. I personally know three men on the board and of all five board members, there was only one brave individual who voted no. Thank you, Mr. John Koulianos. Mr. Andrew Otis, you didn't even ask one question. You could have at least asked Mrs. Tara Paney a couple tough questions, regardless if you were going to vote yes on all three items. And Mr. Cuscutis, I, I appreciate the questions you asked, but I think you could have asked more thorough questions as well. Those are the three individual men I know. You know, I used to ride my dirt bike and four-wheelers up and down the ABR property, so I'm very familiar with it and all around the wetlands. You know, and now to the, the, the planning and zoning board may need a re-haul if they don't want to come prepared and ask tough questions. And to Morgan Group, first I want to say we Tarponites aren't impressed with the apartment complex or its design. It's cheap and tacky. Tarponites don't want an apartment complex that will diminish in value. People don't value what they rent. And was there a backup for building townhomes that people can own and value? Don't tell me this apartment complex is the best we can do. Tarponites don't believe it. Morgan Group has produced 20,000 apartments? Well, do us a favor and show us a complex you built in a historic city like ours, along a vital river that supports the city. Show us an apartment complex you built with the same variables our city has and prove to us it's maintained its value and charm. There's more important things to a city than just, uh, property, uh, property value and taxes. You know, the last thing we want is another riverside apartment complex. The research and development costs Morgan Group has spent is a drop in the bucket for them. Just like the fees they pay their engineers to come up to the boards and convince us the roads in and out the complex will work. Just because they can work doesn't mean it will work and be without issues. They claim a five-second gap in traffic. What does that mean moving across the road at five miles an hour for five seconds? Or does that mean moving across the road at 25 miles an hour for five seconds? There's no clarification. These engineers get paid to do this. Don't let them fool us commissioners. Last but not least, the Tara Panties. The hypocrisy your family displays is unlike anything we've ever seen. Townsend, how many times have you recused yourself this past year because of you or your family's interests? I guess the marina wasn't good enough. When Walmart wanted to build on the ABR property, it was John Tara Paney on the planning and zoning board at the time and one of the leaders in a lawsuit against the city of Tarpon Springs and Walmart. I provided the lawsuit to Thea Irene for minutes earlier today. Imagine that. Now the Tara Panties find a way to profit off the property they went out of their way to find Morgan Group. Then Morgan, then Morgan Group used Cindy Tara Paney to present the code variances on the property to the planning and zoning board. And no one from City Hall, especially Ms. Vincent or Ms. McNeese can say no to Cindy Tara Paney and John. I mean, it was Mark Lacorson, Townsend, who brought back Ms. Vincent. This stuff is unheard of. I have that, Cindy.
Mr. Kulyas, I think you said enough about Mr. Tara Paney. He's not here present. He's not an official. I will appreciate if you don't mention his name again, because if you do, I want to discontinue.
Yes, sir. I, I will not mention his name again. I have to ask Cindy Tara Paney, how much are you being paid from this, from Morgan Group to represent them to sell out your own city of Tarpon Springs? Because I'm telling you, you are lying to yourself if you think this is the best property of, this is the best project for that property. You guys, the same family who I commend on preserving our small town and not selling out to the rest, like the rest of the cities in this county has, is the same family who wants to sell the last from tariff property north of the city. So if this gets approved, how much are you guys making? And I want to make sure that Banther and Tara Paney on the record won't sell or lease any Angler Harbor if this is the inside deal is approved. The same environmentalists who want to preserve the wetlands is the same ones who now find it acceptable to build on it only when it profits them. I hope you commissioners can stand up for principle and vote no, or at least 2-2 vote. And regarding the density, the density is a joke. Just because you're allowed to build 485 and you show us you have 404 apartments, don't think that's being conservative. This should be only 100 to 200 apartments. And the donation of 1.1.8 acres isn't enough. Donate more land to the city of Tarpon Springs. And Mayor, you better not sell out this last piece of property for your friends. Everybody up there is lying about wetlands being impacted, just like the Icaria Apartments, and then we all regretted it later. They say this will, you know, to avoid the wetlands, we will be creating a four-story cluster. A cluster of apartments is the last thing we need. Citizens are watching. A, a cluster of concrete, a rent will be from 1,500 to 2,500. And in five years, with minimum wage going up, who knows what rent will be? You know, your stormwater ponds, you still have to build those stormwater ponds by the eagle's nest. So like I said, let's think about a boat ramp for the citizens. And this park you guys claim, no one is going to use that park where it's located. Let's be real, it might be a spot for more homeless to go sleep on and it could be another issue. So the best thing to do is find a way for the citizens of Tarpon Springs to access it. And do what they need to do.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Jump, if you can move on to the next person who's raised their hand in the Zoom call.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Uh, my name is Jeff Larson. My address is 1846 Lexington Place, Tarpon Springs. I'm speaking this evening as president of Turn the Tide for Tarpon. Uh, in fact, I'll be reading an email, uh, that our organization sent in earlier today. Before I read the email, I do want to take this opportunity to address the apparent outrage expressed by Mr. Armstrong regarding the timeliness of our email. Uh, we do, in fact, believe that the timing of our email was completely appropriate. Uh, as Mr. Armstrong noted, uh, this project has already gone through TRC. However, the TRC meetings generally are not designed for, uh, public comment. Uh, the, the project also did go through the planning and zoning board on November 16th. We did take the opportunity to view the planning and zoning board meeting on the city's YouTube channel. Based on our viewing of that meeting, we then formulated our position and this email. So again, we, we think the timing of our email was completely appropriate. Uh, we planned on speaking tonight and we thought by sending the email ahead of time, that would be a courtesy to the board. In any event, this is what we sent earlier today. Dear Mayor, Vice Mayor and Commissioners, we, the members of Turn the Tide for Tarpon, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit corporation, wish to express our concerns regarding the Angler Harbor project. We understand that the commission will consider a change in zoning at a meeting on Tuesday, December 8th. We believe there exists a significant risk of flooding from the wetlands on the west and east sides of the property. Please examine the NOAA flood maps below. We, we sent three screenshots. Uh, so please examine the NOAA flood maps below, which display in descending order today and the expected growth of wetlands, given two feet and three feet of sea level rise. That's approximately years 2040 and 2055, based upon NOAA projected mean high estimate for St. Petersburg and the surrounding areas. These projections assume that we continue to burn fossil fuels at the current rate. We are also concerned about the significant risk of traffic accidents occurring with entrance and exit onto US 19 from the single access road proposed. Assuming that 180 cars, uh, per rush hour will each be able to navigate a five-second gap in traffic seems like an overly optimistic and possibly dangerous assumption to us. Common sense suggests otherwise. Additionally, we believe that any potential project on this sensitive parcel of land should include certain sustainable components. The project should definitely be connected to reclaimed water. The project should include the use of solar panels. We believe 20% of the parking spaces should be pre-wired for future electric vehicle chargers and 2% of the parking spaces should have EV chargers actually installed. LEED certification should be added as a condition for approval. LEED, Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design, is the most widely utilized green building rating system in the world. Available for virtually all building types, LEED provides a framework for healthy, highly efficient and cost-saving green buildings. LEED certification is a globally recognized symbol of sustainability, achievement and leadership. We respectfully ask that this project be tabled until additional information on these issues can be studied and resolved. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Mr. Jump? I'm sorry, we're going to go ahead and finish the rest of the public and then, did you have a question of Mr. Larson? Is that what you're doing, cross-examination? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Mr. Larson, are you still there?
I'll bring him back in.
Yeah, I'm, I'm here. Yes, I am.
Okay, Mr. Armstrong has a few questions for you, please.
Hey Jeff, how are you?
I'm doing well. How are you doing, Jeff?
I'm doing fine, thank you. You, you, uh, and I'll be very brief. Uh, you mentioned flooding. Do you have any professional credentials in terms of engineering or geology or hydrology or anything of that nature to support your testimony as to flooding?
No, no, I do not. I was referencing information from NOAA.
Okay, thank you. And same question with respect to traffic. Uh, any background in traffic engineering, uh, engineering, transportation planning, anything of that nature?
No, I do not. I was referencing information that was provided by the applicant's traffic study and traffic expert at the planning and zoning board meeting, where he specifically utilized the word weave. Uh, when he talked about, uh, people that are exiting the property that they would need to weave across in, uh, five-second gaps. Uh, and the use of the word weave and five-second gap sounded dangerous to us, but no, I am not a traffic study expert.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Larson. Uh, Mr. Jump, let's move to the next person who's on the Zoom call. Is anyone else?
Yes, sir. I'll allow the next person in.
Thank you.
If you could state your name and address for the record, sir? I have a, Mr. Washburn. Are you available, sir? I'll try and move to the next person.
Thank you.
If you could state your name and address for the record?
Paul Robinson, 948 Bay Shore Drive, Tarpon Springs. The quantitative analysis that you were provided by the applicant regarding traffic is, is troublesome to me. When you are, let's say at rush hour and you have people behind you in line and you're trying to cross three lanes of, of traffic and the highway 19 going north, you are not thinking from a temporal standpoint. You have to negotiate three line, three, uh, highway, uh, traffic lanes individually. And it's not based upon, uh, counting to five. It's not based upon a five-second gap. It's based upon, um, determining the other traffic that is coming up behind you and the speed at which they're moving. Then you have to have sufficient, um, space and time to be in a, a U-turn lane and then you have to navigate a fourth lane to go south. So at a busy time of day with 180 vehicles, um, you've got to find four gaps, not one. That's a setup for, um, for serious traffic accidents on a highway that we all know is dangerous. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Mr. Jump, can you go to the next person, please? You have some questions of, uh, Mr. Robinson? Are you still there? Mr. Jump, if you can bring Mr. Robinson back in?
Yes, I am.
Okay, Mr. Armstrong has a few questions.
Yeah, it really comes down to one general theme. You gave testimony about traffic, traffic patterns, traffic flows. What credential, professional credentials, education, background or training do you have with respect to traffic movements?
With respect to traffic movements, I do not have specific credentials. I'm speaking with common sense as someone who has used those highways and who has treated patients injured on those highways.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Uh, that was the only question that he had. Mr. Jump, if you can go to the next person, please.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Put your name and address, please.
It's, uh, Mark Washburn at 124 Eastlake Drive in Tarpon Springs, 4034688. I'm also the president of SaveEastlake.org, um, a 501(c)(4) nonprofit. And, uh, I think a lot of stuff already been said. I was one of the team that helped rescue the property from the proposed Walmart, uh, along with several other members of the community. And, um, I would like to iterate that I'm against this project in every which way and form. We fought hard to try and make it a park. Uh, we were talking with the Thousand Friends of Florida to get funding. We had funding, potential funding lined up from Penny from Pinellas and other, one other organization that, um, we could have co, um, co-mingled our funds and actually purchased the property and turned it into a park. Unfortunately, that opportunity was squandered. Um, I still think it's a possibility if people will rethink what that property should be in the future. If this thing's turned into this high-density condo complex, um, and really turns Tarpon in a completely different direction than what I've been aware of in the last 25 years. We've always been a small community of regular homes, regular people. And to turn us into like a Clearwater-like, high-density, um, condo and, and apartment complex type of a town, will forever turn the city in the wrong direction, in my opinion. So as the president of SaveEastlake.org, I'd like to, uh, view my, uh, express my opposition to this project. And, um, hopefully the board will rethink, um, what directions you're taking regarding this last large piece of property that potentially could be used by the entire city of Tarpon Springs. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jump, if you can move to the next person?
I was curious if their attorney had any questions for me, Panayotti's Kulyas. I know I already spoke, but I just wanted to make sure if he wanted to rebuttal any of my argument. And I want to make sure Morgan Group comes back showing us an apartment complex that's built in the same areas, similar to our town, that's maintained its value and its charm.
You've had your opportunity to speak. There is no questions for you at this point, so thank you for your cooperation. Uh, Mr. Jump, if you can move to the next person, please.
If anyone else would like to speak, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Jump. Mr. Armstrong, now is your opportunity as the applicant to present your closing. Mr. Armstrong, now is your opportunity as the applicant to present your closing statement or summary, if you'd like to do that before the city staff does it.
Yes, I will. Address the commission, and I will be brief. It's late. You've been extremely patient. You've taken a lot of testimony tonight. We appreciate your patience. I'm going to take you back to where we all started, where Mr. Trask was swearing people in. And there was discussion about the fact we are in a quasi judicial process. What the law says is that you base your decision upon the competent substantial evidence that's induced at tonight's hearing. That's the testimony of your staff, testimony of witnesses, what you gathered, your questions, all that is what goes into creating competent substantial evidence. But it must be a factual analysis, not an emotional analysis. You have very specific criteria in your code. We believe by the totality of testimony of Ms. Terapini and our other experts, subject matter experts in their particular field, that we have demonstrated we meet all of the appropriate criteria. Development in Florida is highly regulated. The development of the site will be highly regulated. We ask that you follow the directive to base your conclusion upon the competent substantial evidence and that you, we ask that you approve this, these three applications before you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Armstrong. Ms. Vincent, do you have a summary or closing? No? Okay, thank you. So at this point, Mayor, it's back to the commission for the commission's consideration. And here we're on ordinance 2020-34. We still need to read resolution 2020-72 when you're ready.
Thank you. The chair will detain a motion. And then we have a commission discussion.
I would make a motion to approve of the following conditions on top of staff's conditions. The first one would be to remove number, condition 14. That was recommended by staff based on the applicant's withdrawal or, I forget the wording he used, for the pocket park. Additional conditions are as follows. To have discussions with DOT about a signalized U-turn that ties to Spruce and Beckett for safe turning or safe U-turns on US 19. The next condition would be hiring a Florida green building consultant to determine the level of LEED certification of the building. The next condition would be based on the applicant is to substitute the Viburnum odoratissum with Viburnum suspensum. Replace the Dayhun Holly with either a Yopon upright or Yopon weeping. I do have some comments, Mayor, pertaining to the safety, so of the US Highway 19, but I'm gonna hold that off until, I think, commission comments.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Just to clarify the motion, Vice Mayor, as far as the signalized U-turns go, could you give me a little bit more clarity on that?
Yeah, so during the discussion with the traffic engineer, it would be something that would tie into the signals at Spruce and the signals at Beckett. So when US 19 has a red light going north and south at Spruce, there then would be a red light at the U-turn for the northbound or southbound traffic to allow safe U-turns to go on to US 19 to where they wouldn't be cutting in front of traffic. So it'd be a clear, no traffic is going to go across US 19 without a light.
So like an arrow?
Basically.
Okay. And at those already pre-existing, you know, light intersections?
No, this would be in addition to the cutouts on US 19 that they're proposing, the left U-turn cutouts.
So this would add more signals?
So it would add an additional signal, but it would be tied to the Spruce and the Beckett. So it only turned red when those, those lights are red. That was a discussion that we, I think, I believe that we had with the traffic engineer to have discussions with the DOT.
Understood. Is that something that they're just going to look into with your motion?
I would prefer that it be something that we have. I don't, from a discussion standpoint, I would like to discuss it further as a board. I do have some concerns from a safety standpoint with the U-turn lanes being in the, on 19.
Okay, I'm, yeah, I'm happy to have, I'm happy if the motion says for them to look into it and get back to us on it. I'm not sure I want to commit to adding more signals along there yet.
That is, that is my motion, yeah.
Okay.
Correct.
Then I'll second.
Based on your professional opinion, this project meets the criteria for, to be approved?
Mayor, we've closed the testimony portion of the case, the applications, so...
I thought we have the right to ask questions if we want to?
No, sir, we, we've closed it. If you want to reopen it, then we need to reopen it to Mr. Armstrong as well to present additional testimony.
No, that's okay.
Do you want to do that?
That's all right.
Okay, sir.
Well, based on the backup information that we have and based on the testimony that Ms. Vincent gave us earlier, this project meets the criteria. And this is a quasi judicial. So our decision must be based on the evidence that was presented to us. Condition number 14 has been withdrawn. That was something that I was, I had a heartburn with. But I'm still, even though that I have asked questions about the traffic and how we're going to, how to cross three lanes on the highway, that's something bothers me. But listening to the expert, and I'm not a traffic engineer, so I have to rely on the information that we get from the expert, so with that. But I'm still going to be concerned after the project is completed, if we approve it, that what the expert is telling us is correct. So I'm not 100% confident about that. I would prefer to utilize the back road of the development going to the, to the Jasmine. Mrs. Terapini told us that the width of the road is only 40 feet and we need to have 50 feet. It would be logical for the developer to purchase the land that is needed to make a 50 feet so it can be safe for, for the residents of the development. So I will ask Vice Mayor Carr if we can include something like this, that the applicant will be obligated to make any effort to purchase the land that is needed for the road to be extended to be 50 feet wide just for the safety of the residents of the development. That's all I have. Vice Mayor Carr?
And Mayor, if I could ask, that's just to leave, it wouldn't be like a one-way street just to leave or come in, it would be both ways to come and go?
Well, 50 feet, I think it should be based on the testimony that we got.
Okay.
It should have been enough to, to have a two-way.
Okay. Yeah. Mayor, I do have heartburn and great concerns of US 19 as well with traffic coming and going. I would be willing to add that to our, the motion that was on the floor. A couple of things I think it's important to, as the applicant said they're going to come back and discuss about the reclaimed water after they discussed with the city, and then also the bus shelter after they do some more due diligence on their end on what I believe the Pasco County bus route is. I can't read now. So those are two important things that, for those to come back for additional information. There was a couple of public comments I feel that should be addressed as well with the turtles. I think that was a valid point with the bucket versus backhoe, solar use, and then the wetland mitigation standpoint. So I'll ask that the applicant have some more information on those the next time we come to the meeting with some additional information on that. So other than the concerns on US 19 with the ingress and egress, there's no other concerns that I have right now.
Vice Mayor, would you like to include into your motion the, for the applicant to look into purchase more land in order for the traffic to go with Jasmine?
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, can there even be a condition? And this might be a staff question at some point during, between now and the next meeting. It would be a waiver of saying that this, the commission would potentially allow a road to be at 40 feet width or something along those lines. I mean, I'm supposed that would be something we could look at as well. So it could be two things. It could be that they look into purchasing property to add to the road width, or they find an alternative for a waiver with the commission's approval to put the road in as well. So it gives more creativity or flexibility in that area. It wouldn't be a fast traveling road, it'd be a slow road, so I think that might be an option. So yes, I would, I would like to add that to my motion.
Thank you. Commission?
First, Mayor.
Would you be willing to accept that?
I would be willing to accept that, but also I think we should extend the meeting.
I'm sorry?
We should extend the meeting. I said 11:30 earlier.
Time already, yes.
Yeah. I move that we extend the meeting to midnight.
Second.
Any roll call, please?
Ms. Nevada Deodis?
Yes.
Ms. Donovan?
Yes.
Ms. Terapini?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Well, who's this?
Yes. Thanks for your time. I have something else that you like that?
Yeah, I'm willing to stay with the second, and I'm confident moving forward as this progresses that we can hold the developer accountable for the traffic concerns and the environmental concerns.
Question, Terapini? Commission, particulars?
Got a couple of procedural questions, either for Mr. Trask or for Ms. Vincent. Can I ask those?
You can ask some of me.
Yeah, one is...
If you can get in front of the microphone, I can barely hear you.
Yes.
Okay.
One is, you know, Mr. Armstrong brought up the fact, and I'm just kind of laying the groundwork here because I'm not real happy with what I've heard tonight from, from, from a lot of people. And I'm just want to get my understanding. Mr. Armstrong made a comment that we have to base our decision on the information or on the facts, the evidence that was presented tonight. But there was a lot of questions that were asked without really good answers or anything. How do you base your decision based on evidence that may have not been given?
You're going to base your decision on the evidence that you did hear?
Okay. This is a first reading of an ordinance. And if it gets denied this evening, then it doesn't move forward at all, is that correct?
That's correct.
And we have another opportunity to, to, to approve or deny, which would be next week, I guess, is what I understand is scheduled to be December 15th.
The second reading will be on December the 15th. So if it's approved tonight, we'll move on to that second reading on the 15th.
And then that's for the preliminary. And then, and then we have the final site plan, which I think is Ms. Vincent said earlier that there may be a little bit of wiggle room for making changes, but nothing significant, I think.
That's correct. If it's a material deviation, we'd have to come back.
All right. But as far as the waivers go, is that part of the resolution or is that part of the ordinance?
This is part of the ordinance. It's reflected in section three of the ordinance, first items one and two.
All right. I want to make it clear to the developer and to the representatives of this, I'm not happy with a lot of things I've heard. I don't have an issue with the kayak property or anything like that. I get the sense that the commissioners aren't, or see the same thing as many of the residents. But I do have a, because I'm a former engineer, and I can't believe that we're, the single point of access is a waiver. That's a life safety issue from my perspective. And we have an opportunity to make it work, and we're, we're being asked for a waiver of that. That's something that in good conscience, I can't support. So I don't have a problem moving forward this evening, but if some things don't change between now and next week, I'm going to be voting no next week. I just want to let the commission know that. One is a single point of access. I want something definitive done on that. It was okay when ABR was, had issues with that, and I don't understand why it's not okay, whether there's additional property that needs to be purchased, whether it's on the city's shoulders to do that or whether it's on the developers. I'm not happy with the fact that a traffic study as, as was requested or as the developer knows is going to be requested by DOT, if DOT hasn't been done yet. I'm not happy with that. And I very much appreciate the commissioner's questions concerning the, we all live on US 19, we've all gone down that area a number of times. I can't begin, for the traffic engineer, I can't begin to tell you how many times I've sat and counted to five and I still can't get through. I'm kind of saying that a little sarcastically, but that's a nice rule of thumb, but that's not reality. And, and the other problem I have with a single point of access, many times that particular location is gridlocked. And, and I'd like, I don't want to be standing at that exit, listening to residents wondering why they can't get out, either go north or south on US 19. So there's a number of things here. Let me just go through this and Vice Mayor Carr, I don't, I'm not going to ask you to amend your motion on this. It's just something that I'm going to state, and I hope somebody writes this down for next week. I'd like to see a grading plan. I'm not sure why we weren't given a full set of plans as we have been in the past on this development, even whether they're preliminary or not. I'd like to see a grading plan. I'm not happy with the number of trees that are being taken out, although I understand from, given the amount of, of grading on this site that's going to happen, it's, whether they're in the way or not, they're going to be taken out because they won't survive any other way. The single point of access, I, I'll vote in the affirmative this evening, but I, I can't support that in a waiver unless there's a definitive next week, unless there's a way that that's been corrected and eliminated or else fixed, one way or the other. The reclaimed water, it's unconscionable to me to, to sit here and listen to, by both the staff side and the, and the developer's side, the professionals, that the discussion of reclaimed water hasn't even been brought up. And there isn't even a, an answer as far as how the, how the landscaping is going to be irrigated by well water, by our O, our O, or, or O water, or some other means. And I just, there's too much, that's, that site is too large for there not to be irrigation taken there one way or the other, whether it's a matter of capacity or practicality. If we're putting in a forced main from that location all the way to the treatment plant, which is the source of the reclaimed water, I'm not sure why there couldn't have been a reclaimed water line laid in. I won't say adjacent to that because I know there's a separation requirement with the, with the sewer line to be located there. And I've, I've, for the civil engineer, I was city manager here before, I know the complexity of dealing with utilities on, was also a former engineer and city engineer as well, the complexities of utilities and some of the conflicts you get there, but it's just something that you get paid to get around. So I don't think that's a good reason why reclaimed water line couldn't be run all the way down to the, to the treatment plant. And for the commissioner, it also provides an opportunity for those along Live Oak Street or whatever path it is. Live Oak Street or whatever path it does take to tap into that and allow another saving of our good water, potable water for not having to water plants with that. So I'm hoping you get the sense I'm not a happy camper tonight with what I've heard. I think this is too large of a project. There's too much that's been done. I think it's being brought to us a little prematurely without all these answers being there. And, and, and I'm just, you know, if we are where we are next week with what I hear tonight, I'm not going to support this project. But I'll let it move ahead because I know what would happen if we vote no on the first reading. It just basically kills the project. And I'd like to give the developer and the staff a chance to iron a couple of these bugs out. So that's it in here. Thank you.
Well, we have a motion in a second. If there's no more comments, questions?
Mayor, as y'all know, being kin to part of the applicant's team, I'm going to recuse myself tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So roll call for 17A, please.
Commissioner Vaticiotes?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor, who's this?
Yes. The item number 17B, which is the Resolution 2020-72, conditional use. City Attorney, if you please, read the title.
Mayor Commissioners, Resolution 2020-72, a resolution of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, approving application 20-123, requesting a conditional use permit to allow the establishment of a residential use in the Commercial General CG Future Land Use District on property located at 42501 US Highway 19 North, providing for findings, providing for conditions, and providing for an effective date. That was the reading of Resolution 2020-72 by title only.
Thank you. That has been discussed as well, so the chair will detain the motion.
I've got a question for the city attorney. Do we need to put the same conditions on for the conditional use? Or is we're good as leaving on 17A?
You can rely upon 17A because the Section 3 of this resolution, under effective date, says it's only going to be effective upon the adoption of Ordinance 2020-34. So once that ordinance is approved, this resolution will become effective too. So whatever you're doing with the prior ordinance, it would be covered.
Okay. Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Vaticiotes?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor, who's this?
Yes, thank you. The next item that I'd like to to discuss is the item 19, which is the Resolution 2020-80, ratification of executive orders is something that we must do. City Attorney, if you please, read the resolution.
So we're skipping over item 18 to go to 19?
Yes, for right now, yeah.
Yes, sir. Okay, so Resolution 2020-80, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, ratifying Executive Order 2020-41, and extending the declaration of the local state of emergency to November 17, 2020, and ratifying Executive Order 2020-42, extending the declaration of local state of emergency to November 24, 2020, and ratifying Executive Order 2020-43, extending the declaration of local state of emergency to December 1, 2020, and providing for an effective date hereof. That was the reading of Resolution 2020-80 by title only.
Thank you. The chair will detain the motion.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any public comments on this item? We hear none. Ms. Jacobs, have we received any emails?
No emails.
Mr. Jump, do we have anybody online that are wishing to speak?
If anyone would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we have no raised hands at this time, sir.
Thank you. Do we have any commission comments, questions on that item? And roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticiotes?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Tera Penny?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor, who's this?
Yes, thank you. Looks like we still have time. We can do item number 18, which is the Resolution 2020-79, authorization for, of inter-fund loan. City Attorney, please read the title, and if you please explain the resolution because we discussed it the last meeting.
Yes, Mayor. This is Resolution 2020-79, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, authorizing an inter-fund loan for $300,000 from the sanitation fund to the redevelopment trust fund for the downtown Tarpon Springs community redevelopment area for the purchase of real property and providing an effective date. That was the reading of Resolution 2020-79. The purpose of the resolution is to just memorialize the fact that you were transferring $300,000 as an inter-fund loan from the sanitation fund to the downtown CRA for the purposes of purchasing the Hoffman property that is on the west, on the corner of West Tarpon Avenue and Spring Boulevard. The, the actions in the resolution provide that this transfer will take place, that the loan will be paid back in $100,000 increments in the fiscal years of 2022, 23, and 24, that no interest will be charged or received for the inter-fund loan, and that the resolution would become effective immediately upon its adoption. If there are any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
The chair will detain emotion on that.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Are there any public comments on this item?
Peter Lax, 514 Ashland Avenue. My comments on this is, as I've said before, all these inter-fund loans shifting here, shifting there, between the sanitation, the water and sewer department, and whatever other departments you're robbing from, there's no backup information that y'all have been provided, or the citizens, of how much is still outstanding on other inter-fund loans. I believe we still have money owed from the golf course, and I'm not sure what other inter-fund loans that y'all have approved of in the last 10 years. But I think as a commission board, it's an obligation and responsibility to advise the residents and yourselves of all of the monies that have been inter-fund loaned and how much have been paid back and how much is outstanding. Y'all don't have that information.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments? Ms. Jacobs, have we received any emails?
No emails.
Mr. Jump, do we have anybody on Zoom who would like to speak?
If anyone would like to speak from Zoom, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time, sir.
Thank you. Do we have any commission comments on this item?
I've got a quick one, based on the public comment that came tonight. This is an area that we evaluate every budget season, and we have multiple meetings that we have discussions about inter-company or inter-fund loans. So it's something that we discuss, something we talk about multiple times during the budget season. So we are aware of what they are and what ones are out there. So just for clarification for the public, so they understand that the board does talk about these during the budget season. Thank you.
Do we have any other comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticiotes?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Tera Penny?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor, who's this?
We do have three more items on the agenda. I would like to do item number 22 because the other two is going to take a lot of time. So item 22, which is the appointment of the Sustainability Committee. On September 22, 2020, Tina Buivalas was appointed to the alternate number two, and she officially, she notified the office that she declined the appointment. So we need to appoint someone from the list that we have there as an alternate number two, and the term expires September 30, 2023. Vice Mayor? May you selection, please?
I do like to evaluate if the applicants have participated in the Citizens Academy. Carol Mickett has participated in this, looking at her application. I would recommend Carol Mickett to be, to fill the open position, an alternate position.
So you have Mickett?
Yes.
Question, Tera Penny?
I'll go with Ms. Niehan.
Commissioner Donovan?
I'd go with Siobhan Niehan as well.
Vice Mayor Vaticiotes?
The second applicant, Ms. Mitchum. Is it Carol Mitchum?
Make it?
Micken, that's correct.
Make it, okay. Okay. I also like Carol Make it as well. So if we have a motion to that effect.
Make a motion to appoint Carol Make it as alternate number two, with a term to expire in September 30, 2023.
Okay. Do we have any commission comments?
Just that they're both great candidates.
Yes.
Second.
Are there any public comments on this item? Ms. Jacobs, have we received any emails?
No emails.
Mr. Jump, do we have any attendees wishing to speak on this item?
If anyone would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time, sir.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticiotes?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Tera Penny?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor, who's this?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Licures, that leaves us with item number 20 and item number 21. Both of those items will take quite a bit of time.
Yes.
So we're going to, Mr. City Attorney, do we need to defer those? Need a motion to defer those two items?
Yes, sir. I would suggest that if we're going to do that to the next meeting or pick a date.
That's the next meeting. So we need a motion to defer item number 20 and item number 21.
Move to defer item 20 and 21 to December 15.
Second.
And roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticiotes?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Tera Penny?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor, who's this?
Yes, thank you. Well, that concludes the regular session agenda. And do we have any staff comments? Police Chief?
No comments, Mayor. Thank you.
City Attorney?
No comments, Mayor.
No.
Jacobs?
No comments.
Vice Mayor Carr?
I enjoyed the boat parade last week. I thought it was a great parade, great turnout. I was on a dock. I was able to watch it. It seemed like there's a lot of great participants. So thank you to everyone that participated in it. I hope the residents enjoyed it. And we'll see you next week.
Commission, Tera Penny?
I have a conflict at our next meeting. It's something that has been scheduled prior to the 15th date coming out for December, and I will not be here, so I would appreciate an excused absence. Thank you.
Need a motion to excuse Commissioner Tera Penny?
Motion to excuse.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Tera Penny?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Carol, who's this?
Yes, thank you. Commission, Tera Penny, any other comments?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Commission, Vaticiotes? Any comments?
Yes, the city manager, the status.
I think it's getting too late, eh?
It's late. The status of the art boxes.
Hopefully, barring anything else, the end of this week, beginning of next week.
Finished or starting?
Starting.
Okay.
Or it'll be a while of fishing.
That's fine. Thank you.
I just want to remind to everyone to continue following the CDC guidelines and stay safe. Thank you. The meeting's adjourned at 11:50 PM.